Alrighty folks, it's 5:30 so we'll call this meeting to order. Good evening everyone, good evening. We'll go ahead and we're gonna start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. And it will be led from our students, from Dr. Mildred Dalton Henry Elementary School. So Sol, please rise.
Good evening to the Board of Trustees. Welcome to Mr. Napolos's 4th grade class of amazing scholars at Henry Elementary. We encourage everyone to please join us as we stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance to America.
Put your right hand over your heart, ready to begin.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your beloved, four British stands, one nation, under God, and the legal, and the peace, and justice for all.
Wow, outstanding job students. If that doesn't make you smile, I don't know what will, so. Alrighty folks, let's go ahead and move to 1.3, approval of the agenda.
Second.
It's been moving properly second, is there any items that we need to discuss?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Solin.
We have a read in, under closed session, existing litigation, claim number 585268. The amount is being revised to $80,000. Correct.
Alrighty, thank you, Mr. Solin. Anything else? Alrighty, let's go ahead and vote as the agenda's been amended. Ms. Cunningham?
She said didn't show up.
Alrighty, motion carries, agenda's been approved as amended. 1.4 Inspirational Message, Ms. Maya Savaios.
Thank you, President Wyatt, good evening. And yes, so I didn't have anything planned, or written, or anything like that, so. But I do want to take the opportunity to recognize February as African-American History Month. And, you know, as we enter into the month of February, just really keeping, you know, everything that, all of the accomplishments that our African-American community, you know, has been able to achieve. You know, also remembering Dr. Margaret Hill as well, through this month, commemorating her and her accomplishments as well. Other than that, we're here, we're alive, which is a blessing in its own already. And, yeah, I just want to remind everyone, you know, to be mindful as we continue the school year, you know, it's been a really tough school year for everyone, staff, children, parents, community. And just remember to be graceful with one another and encourage each other and support each other as best as we can, because realistically speaking, everybody's struggling to stay afloat. And, and yeah, we are here tonight, and hopefully we can, we can speak about and focus on what is best for children in the next couple of months before summer comes, right? Making sure that we finish the year strong. And, so yeah, with no more left to say, hopefully we also have a smooth meeting today and we are able to end a little bit earlier than we're usually accustomed to, so. But other than that, I thank everybody for coming out today, and thank you.
Alrighty, thank you, Ms. Savaios, well done. Alrighty folks, we'll move on to 2.0, closed session, 2.1, closed session, public comments. And we did have one public comment, Ms. Ashley Akala, our SBTA president, come on up, welcome.
Good evening, President Wyatt, Superintendent Irvin, members of the Board and Cabinet. I'm Ashley Bidasalcala, President of the San Bernardino Teachers Association, and tonight I'm speaking to you on behalf of our 3,000 members. This continues to be a school year like no other. Our members continue to put the needs of the district, our students, and the broader community above our educators' needs for a safe and virus, trying to be virus-free learning environment. The district and SBTA are in reach of an agreement, and I applaud this Board of Trustees for your leadership on behalf of our educators. In an NPR report today, teachers are burnt out and looking for the exits in massive numbers that we've never experienced before. I hear the fatigue in my members' voices, and yet they show up every day, knowing that there may be new and expected challenges that they will face. With the current offer that's on the table, we will fall behind other districts we compare with for educators, unless we negotiate for the upcoming year, we will fall further behind than where we are currently. SBTA also recognizes that the district would benefit from offering an early retirement incentive for employees to take advantage of either this year or next. Why hasn't that been discussed at this point in time? The districts that SBCUSD compete with for employees have, for the most part, agreed to respectable on-schedule salary raises and have done so expediently and in recognition of this unprecedented year. The fact that the district and SBTA have not settled on a fair respectable on-schedule raise six months into the year is unacceptable, and I say this and I say this on the heels of what our governor announced last month. The 2223 budget will also include another 5.33 COLA for next fiscal year, compounding the 5.07% COLA that the district received this year. Our fight for a permanent salary increase is fair, respectable, and affordable, but the question remains, does the district have the will to demonstrate value to our educators? Does the district have the will to retain educators who put our communities first during a global pandemic? Does the district have the will to illustrate respect to our educators who time and again put the district's interests ahead of their own? Does the district have the will to attract and reward educators who have chosen San Bernardino over other districts that we compare and compete with this year and in future years? Does the district have the will to respect our educators with a competitive ongoing salary raise, given the settlements of our comparison districts? SBTA has been a working, fair partner with SBCUSD for many years, and both parties have benefited from our willingness to collaborate and execute shared goals in the past. Why is this year any different? We hope to renew this partnership, which yields benefits for both the district and my members, and this includes an ongoing, permanent salary raise. Thank you and good evening.
I'd like to just say, tonight, we don't get a chance to see the teachers out, but thank you, and we really do appreciate you, and we know how tough the last two years have been. And it's only because of our partnerships and the willingness for you to come in and work day in and day out, that we've been able to be successful. So I thank you from the bottom of my heart, thank you.
I also want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. I was a teacher, and a teacher of teachers. I know how hard it is to show up every day, to put yourselves in, you know, not have a, endangering your families, but yet you show up. And that courage to show up, you know, the love for our kids, love for, you know, being a teacher is deep. And, and I know that you all are dedicated, and you care for our kids and their families. So I too thank you for all of your dedication and your love and support, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, Dr. Doughty Rogers.
Thank you, and I want to just echo the same thing, and I think on this entire board, we are certainly appreciative to everything that you all continue to do for us, some of you as I look out, were even still here when my kids were here, and we appreciate you, because as has been said, it's been a struggle and it's been hard, but yet you get up and you do it every day. So thank you so much on behalf of all of us.
Thank you, Dr. Doughty Rogers, Ms. Savaios.
Oh, I also want to obviously chime in and thank every one of you for all of the work that you've done over the past, especially during this, you know, past two, three years, coming into the pandemic. I know that days are long, I know that, you know, students are behind, you know, I get all of those things because I see them every day as well at my job, and so, thank you, thank you for, you know, sticking in there, and you are appreciated.
Thank you, Ms. Savaios, Mrs. Oz Madina.
As everyone has mentioned, our teachers have faced huge challenges, and with those challenges, they're still coming in educating our kids, I want to say thank you so much. And last thing would say is action speaks louder than words, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Oz Madina, and I will go ahead and end by saying, first I'll start by saying, I was gonna say, no public comments from the board, but on this particular issue, I think it's very important that we do say thank you for all that you've done. Most of you probably already know that I'm an educator, and I could say this is by far the hardest year that I've ever had in my career. I thought last year was, you know, I was like, can't get any worse than that. Well then, this year came along, right? And it's been one heck of a challenge, I'll tell you, but we continue to rise to that challenge, you know, and that's what we do as professionals, is we come to work every day and we give 110%, so we really do appreciate you up here on the board. Probably the only reason why I said go ahead and respond, because I'm trying to get these board meetings a little bit shorter, but this particular topic and then you being here tonight means a lot to us, so thank you again. Alrighty, we're gonna move to 2.2, adjourned to closed session, and we should be out by hopefully 7 o'clock, maybe sooner, but we will be back for 7 o'clock in our next thing. Thank you, everyone. Alright, folks, we'll go ahead and get back in session. We'll be moving on with a couple announcements here from closed session, and folks, I just would like to remind you that we are still a mask mandate district, and we need to wear a mask, please, so thank you for that. Alright, 3.1, approval of elementary vice principal, Brown Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second, any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Mine's looping, I apologize, mine's not coming up on my screen. Does anybody else's coming up?
I hear this.
I didn't mine.
Well.
No, I mean even the content information.
Did you, did you find it, Dr.?
I don't even have the name, I apologize.
You're at Courtney Weber, correct?
No, that wasn't the first one.
Are you at 3.1? Or?
Karen, my screen is locked.
It's, no, it's, are we at 3.1? It's 3.1 is Courtney Weber. No, it's Courtney Weber. Mr. Tillman, he may be able to pull it, can you pull it on yours? He can pull it on his.
Alright, and my apologies there, my screen's still locked, but thank God I have partners next to me. Alright, 3.1 was actually approval of elementary vice principal, Brown Elementary School, Ms. Courtney Weber. We had a motion by Mr. Tillman, a second by Dr. Flores, and I believe we had no comment, but we still have to vote, I'm gonna say we still have to vote, did we vote?
Scott, you're gonna have to do verbal, everybody else has voted.
Oh, really? Uh-oh, well, my answer is aye.
You, you did it.
Can you stand so we all know who you are and who that lovely lady is next to you as well?
Congratulations.
And Mr. Tillman is gonna read a closed session action, since I have no screen working right now.
3.2, approval of elementary vice principal, Hillside Elementary School. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the appointment of the following employee, Manuel Reyes, Elementary School Vice Principal, Hillside, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined, funding 035, so moved.
Second.
Been moved and properly second, any discussion? Alright, let's vote. Mine's a verbal, mine is aye. Alrighty, motion carries, congratulations to, it's Mr., I believe, Mr. Reyes, are you here this afternoon?
Yes, sir.
This evening? Alright, congratulations. For those of you that didn't know, Courtney came up in our district all the way, do you mind if I share a little bit? Started as a custodian in our district and worked her way all the way up, so congratulations, Courtney, and both are Cal State San Bernardino graduates as well, so it's great when we have our, grow our own folks, so thank you both and congratulations.
Be resolved that the Board of Education approves settable agreement claim number 585268 in the amount of $60,000. Oh, it's been changed to $80,000. The Board of Education authorizes Deborah Love, Director, purchasing to sign any related documents, so moved.
Second.
Been moved and properly second, any discussion? Alright, let's go ahead and vote.
Ms. Savaios? President Wyatt, I need a verbal.
Alright, motion carries, we'll move on.
3.4, expulsion of stu-, of students. Be resolved that the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of the hearing panel, based on the review of the panel's finding, the facts, and recommendations, and orders the expulsion of the following students with identification number as listed in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code, Section 48900, 456395, 452156, so moved.
Second. Alright, it's been moved and properly second, any discussion? Alright, let's go and vote.
3.5, the following students recommended, recommendation for expulsion, but expulsion is deemed inappropriate based on due process errors, insufficient evidence, and/or the availability of other means of correction in compliance with the Education Code, Section 48900. Therefore, although they were recommended for expulsion, the expulsion is not granted. 40878, 525185, 496326, 423423, so moved.
Been moved a second, vote please.
3.7, petition to expel, rescind, or 3.6, student recommended for suspension or expulsion, excluding mandatory offenses, but remanded to youth court for other means of correction. Be resolved that the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of facts of positive youth development and orders the suspension or expulsion of the following students with identification numbers as listed in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code, Section 48900, 509068, 456545, 401000, 451520, 443857, so moved.
Second.
Been moved a second, vote please.
3.8, other closed session action, there was none?
Seven.
3.7.
3.7?
Petition.
Petition to expel, rescind, or modify youth court or expulsion. Be resolved that the Board of Education authorizes expulsion and/or youth court modification, expulsion, or rescinding of the following students with identification numbers as indicated below to schools of the San Bernardino City Unified School District in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code, 48900, student number 517704, so moved.
Second.
So moved a second, vote please. Motion passed. Other closed session action? I don't believe, there was, there was no other action? Personnel Commission Report? Please turn your microphone on, we can't hear you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. So, good evening, Board, Dr. Scott Wyatt, Mr. Tillman, members of the Board, Mr. Irvin, wherever he's at, and Cabinet. My name is Irma Garcia, Personal Director for the Personnel Commission Department. First, I wanted to say on behalf of the Personnel Commission staff and commissioners that we are very saddened by the loss this Board has had with Dr. Hill's passing. We will keep Dr. Hill's family, friends, and our Board in our thoughts and prayers. Again, thank you for having me tonight to provide updates specific to classified recruitment, testing, interviews, hiring for the, for the past calendar year, 2021. As you know, that there have been some hiring challenges in the classified side of the house, and last year, even though, you know, ever since we've come back as well, we continue with those challenges, and although my team has made strides to fill as many vacancies as possible, we continue to feel the strain and hardship. And so, next slide, please. I wanted to start by providing the Board with a brief intro to the major functions and responsibilities that fall under the umbrella of the Personnel Commission Department. The Personnel Commission oversees the classified employment processes, which include classification, recruitment, testing. The Personnel Commission oversees establishing, maintaining, and monitoring eligibility list, also the selection interviews, and also, the vacancy log is also maintained and monitored in the Personnel Commission Department. We also receive requests and consider working out of classification requests, and also the last bullet, employee, employee discipline process. So when the, whenever the Board takes action against a permanent classified employee, the employee has rights, and those are, those appeal rights are taken care of in the Personnel Commission Department, and that's something the Commission affords classified employees. Next slide, please. And so, updates on what happened in 2021 in our, in our department, and we've opened approximately 107 recruitments. Many of the same were opened multiple times, due to the high needs of certain positions, we've had to open multiple, multiple recruitments of the same classification. Even though staff worked remotely half of 2021, we were also able to participate in three job fairs, and one that we hosted with our Human Resources Department, the drive-through job fair that took place at the Waua Building, and so we were happy to welcome approximately 300 visitors. For 2021, we also received, reviewed, and processed approximately 7,500 applications, and that's, that's with the 107 recruitments that we've opened. So, for recruitments that opened and closed in 2021, staff also administered related job examination, job-related examinations. Next slide, please. And so, staff also coordinated approximately 211 sets of interviews, and those could be single-position interviews, along with mass, mass interviews with multiple sites and departments. And for example, we have large recruitments that take place at mass, like our cafeteria workers, it's always more practical to have multiple-position interviews, so that we can fill more than one at a time. Commission also, the Commission also ratified 917 employment actions, and those employment actions are listed below that bullet. One of our biggest ones was the additional assignments, where the additional assignments where we sign up our substitutes, and, you know, one person can serve in several substitute capacities. And so, that's why we had that significant number. We also received and processed 231 working out of classification requests. The Commission approved 11 reclassifications at various departments. And also, the Commission approved 11 job classifications, which include seven revisions and four newly established positions. And the last bullet, the Commission facilitated three employee discipline appeals before a hearing officer. All right, next slide, please. All right, so that's our last slide. I just wanted to remind the Board, we have a small team of seven staff members in the Personnel Commission Department that take on the huge task of pushing through and filling as many vacancies as possible. We have a personnel analyst, Ms. Tamara Booker, she's actually here with me today, three associate personnel analysts, a secretary three, a bilingual clerk two, and of course, myself. Staff is very busy working through the challenges, and we appreciate the Commission, our three commissioners that we have for leading such a great team. And I am actually fortunate to have Ms. Valeria Dixon here tonight with us. And that's all I had. I don't know if there's any questions or...
Oh, no. Thank you very much, Ms. Garcia. And I do believe we have some questions. I see Ms. Rosas Medina's light on, so.
Yes, no, I just definitely want to, first of all, thank you for letting us kind of do an overview of what you all do. Unfortunately, with small staff, seven staff members, which is crazy to me, honestly. That's a lot of work for seven staff members. But I do want to mention Ms. Dixon, who is the chairperson for the Personnel Commission, and she was involved as a parent for many, many years with her own daughter in the school district. So I just want to say thank you for joining us. And I don't know if she's also part of maybe saying a few words or so, but, you know, I'd like to ask a few questions with regards, or even having her experience with working with the Personnel Commission, maybe if she sees any areas that we could receive, or we can send additional support.
So, good evening, Dr. Wyatt, Mr. Tillman, and the rest of the Board, and Assistant Superintendent and Superintendent. I wasn't going to say anything tonight. I just want to be here to support the staff. But yes, I will say something. One of the things, and Irma was being very modest about the struggle to hire people, you know, it's happening not just in school districts. It's happening in all organizations. I don't know. We have plenty of jobs all over the place, not just in the school districts. But one of the things I had a discussion with Dr. Funtis yesterday is doing a marketing campaign. We have done some things. There has been some electronic billboards. We've participated in community events and things like that. But I would like to see maybe some funding, maybe in our LCAP, I don't know if it's possible, to market our district to get more people. You know, we have open and promotional, and those folks do promote up, but then we have to backfill those positions. And some of them are entry-level positions. And it would be nice to get some other candidates to come, apply for the job, and hopefully get the job if they qualify and they're good for the job. So, we really need to see about having some funding so that we can really do a big promotion to get people to come and work for this great district.
Thank you, thank you. And definitely, we can look into, you know, if that's something that we can definitely do. But I know with seven staff members, I just, like I said, I don't know how you're all doing it. And you're all still hiring and doing everything that you need to do in order to have our district moving forward. I do have several questions, and that goes to either the three of you or even with the district. And these is like more of the hiring practices. Is it, because, you know, even out there, you know, I have several, you know, I hear comments in regards to practices of hiring. It's not necessarily equal across the board in how we're doing it. So I'm wondering, and that goes to the district, do we have a policy that kind of sets a standard to ensure that if there is this practice of, you know, we have one area that's not necessarily following suit of what the process is, another area that does follow in the suit. So I don't know if you can answer that, or the district of what you, well, first of all, let me just backpedal. What is a process of hiring? If you can explain that, is it board-approved before, and then you look at opening the position, or is it where it's going to the Commission? We don't know about it, but then you're starting the process of hiring, and then it goes to the Board for approval? Yes?
So typically, how we begin the employment process to fill, you know, positions, we try to be as proactive as possible. Whereas if we know someone is retiring soon, and we don't have an eligibility list to use to fill that position when that position is vacated, we usually try to open recruitment in advance, as in advance as possible, to try to get ahead and try to be able to staff our positions as fast as possible. Typically, when we don't know a position is going to be vacant soon, we receive notice via a requisition that is received in our office, where it triggers recruitment, or possible looking at our current eligibility list to see if there are any viable ranks and, you know, candidates that we can hire for that vacant position.
And is that a common practice across the Board? And I don't want to put you on the spot. It's more or less just finding if we do have a policy that kind of sets a standard of how we're doing the practices of hiring across the Board, if there are inconsistencies. And like I said, you know, I should probably just ask the district directly, so we can make sure we do create those policies if we don't have one in place. That way, it can help, you know, with the process. But thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Flores.
Yes, I want to state thank you for the presentation. You're small but mighty.
Yes.
Really mighty. And it seems like you need more help, right? Yeah, so you probably should consider that, you know. Anyway, my grandmother used to say, si no hablas, Dios no te oye. If you don't speak up, God doesn't hear you.
Yes.
Not that we're God, but I mean, you know. But anyway, I just wanted to thank you again very deeply, I mean, for all your work. It's really, really important. And, you know, our community, I mean, we're the largest employer in the whole city, and it's really important that our community knows that there are jobs available. And so, we should be supportive of assisting you in marketing those positions and so forth, and also giving the perception, like Ms. Medina said, that there's equity, you know, in applying and the employment process as well. And also, what happens when we have approved an abolishment in a position? How is that reinitiated? Do we reinitiate the district for you guys to go through the process again to approve it in terms of abolished position?
So, an abolished position would just kind of end there once the Board approves that. We don't really do anything with that position unless it was replaced. And so, if that position, the abolishment, was replaced, then we go through the filling of the position, that process.
Then, if we want to reinstate it, it's our, the district, Dr. Funtis would have to request that it gets reinstated?
Correct.
And then you would go through a process to reinstate it?
To reinstate it.
Or go through all the, what is it that you do?
So, we posted on our vacancy log so that if there is any transfer interest with other classified employees holding, you know, similar classification or same classification, they can put in transfers, and we can start the process of filling that position.
No, no, I'm talking about reinstating it. Do we have to reinstate it?
The Board has to approve of reinstating.
Of reinstating first, before you can fill the position?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ms. Tillman?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I know people get tired of my historical perspective, but I have a great appreciation for Chairperson Dixon and Vice Chairperson Salazar and the other member, Mr. Bond. And for you also, Ms. Garcia, I remember when the Personnel Commission was at a stalemate and totally dysfunctional and brought the district to its knees because we couldn't hire and fill positions. The Commission itself has a lot of autonomy. It's designed that way so you can have a fair process. So I appreciate the process, but it's all about the people to make it work right. So I commend all of you for doing the work that you do. It's just wonderful to see a functioning Personnel Commission. So I can't thank you all enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I say something real quick? I don't want to, I appreciate that, Mr. Tillman, because you know, when I came aboard, there was 500 classified empty positions. And, you know, that was my goal, to make sure that we hired qualified candidates, and it was fair. And if you ever come to the meetings, and these guys can tell you, that's what I'm all about, being fair, and that we're conducting the process correctly, and that we're hiring the best qualified candidate. And, you know, my goal is to get people in this community jobs. And so, that's why we talked about the marketing campaign, so people know, we're hiring, we're here, you know. We need you at our neighborhood schools. We need you to support the kids so that our kids can grow up and be successful. That's why I'm in it. That's why I do it, and that's why I show up. And, yeah, I didn't have anything prepared, but you can tell, I'm passionate about making sure that our kids are getting the best, the best, so they can be successful. Thank you.
And Ms. Dixon, that's a very easy ask. Like I said, you're greatly appreciated. I know the work that you've done, maybe working with the superintendent and maybe Dr. Funtis' office. We can coordinate where we can, or it has to be agendaed for the Board to give President Wyatt funds so we can do that recruitment, because I think it's a great idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman. Dr. Rogers?
Thank you. And just real quick, good to see you all, and you, Ms. Dixon, having the nerves to retire. But just to put it in context, do we have the number of vacancies? Is that a number that we can know?
We have 247.
247? Okay, various, I'm sure, all across the board. Okay, thank you.
Just a follow-up, because I know they're kind of busy. What kind of positions do you see that are the number, the top three that we currently, for those that may be listening and maybe want to apply?
So, the top most needed is cafeteria worker, and our special education instructional positions, and our playground positions. Those are our top highest needed positions.
Okay, great. Thank you for sharing that.
Sorry, the light system is still on. Maybe that's messed up too. Well, no, thank you again, Ms. Garcia, for all the work that you guys do. Wow, you know, seven for 8,000, that's how I look at it. That's a pretty tough ratio, but thank you for getting those vacancies filled over the years, too. I remember when I first came on the Board and hearing that, and I was like, oh my gosh, how are we getting the job done? But let's get those advertisements out there and recruit some great people to come to our organization. So, thank you again. All right, folks, we'll be moving on to Resolutions 4.2, Resolution in recognition of National School Council.
Did you guys get my message about the public comments? No? I, mind you all.
No, we can do that, if the Board is in agreement. All right, we will pause the resolutions, and let's move on to 5.0, public comments. 5.1, receive public comments. And we will start with the first one, which is Mr. Terry Boykins. Come on up. Good evening.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Wyatt, new president, appreciate you serving. Mr. Tillman, Dr. Rogers, all of you, we want to say thank you from Project Fighting Chance. Just to give you an update, most people are aware of us because of what we've accomplished in boxing. But the reality of it is, our enrichment program has garnered national attention that is very significant. And there are things that are happening in that enrichment program that I think it would be, it would behoove the Board to come and find out what exactly goes on after school at Project Fighting Chance outside of boxing. And I know Ann Pearson and Dr. Rodriguez had a chance to join me recently on something very significant involving diversity, equity, inclusion with the top women executives in the construction industry that are interested in Project Fighting Chance and its role of reducing childhood violence, aggression, and trauma. But more importantly, looking at the future labor force and how coping skills and mechanisms of today's youth will infect productivity of tomorrow's workplace. That is what's going on in the enrichment room at Project Fighting Chance. There are other national activities that are happening with regards to the attention. We are constantly getting contacted from around the country to expand Project Fighting Chance's system and philosophy as relates to childhood trauma. And Dr. Manarez, and Dr. Hill, and Dr. Rodriguez, I think five years ago or so, when you all stepped into that place. I think today, as Alphabet did a 20-to-1 split, Project Fighting Chance has done well with your investment. And I would invite all of you to come to Project Fighting Chance to see what's going on around the country. What you have here is one of the issues that we're concerned about the impact of bullying and coercion and manipulation of sex trafficking in our respective schools and our communities. Project Fighting Chance is partnered with the District Attorney's Office, and we will be doing a very strategic outreach to work with young ladies who are confronted with this kind of coercion. And we are going to do it MGM-style in boxing, center ring, sex trafficking to address issues. And then we will follow that up with teen dating violence, intimate partner violence, domestic violence, as well as sexual assault and abuse, particularly as it relates to young people transitioning into college, understanding that one in five young ladies will be victims of assault on a college campus. That is going to happen at Project Fighting Chance. And we want to invite you, we want to invite the Board, to come meet your students after school. I know Dr. Irvin has been there, I've had a chance to see some of the things we're doing. I want to invite you all to take a walk with our youth, your students, in the Tranquility Garden, and listen to some of the things that they are confronted with, that they bring after school. And so, we want to invite you to the 24th, talk to the young ladies about the issues and the risks of trafficking and predators, and what we can do more after school to make a difference in San Bernardino City Unified School District. Thank you, Board.
Mr. Boykins, thank you. And great presentation. Just want to let you know, too, some of us on this Board also sit on the Executive Board of the Gangs Drugs Task Force, and I think we could definitely get behind, you know, what you're doing with the young ladies. I know that's a huge issue for us throughout the county, and you'd have our full support as well. Dr. Flores?
I want to personally thank you. This is really important, and for being guardian angels of our children and protecting them when they're not in school, or could be in school as well. And I will be there on the 24th. Thank you. Where is it?
It will be at 1263 Union Street.
1263 Union?
And if you all know the Home and Navally Service, we are at the Home and Navally Services. We're in the back to...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The Home and Navally Services?
Okay, oh, Navally Services, yeah, yeah.
And also, too, if you get a chance to come by, we have actually practically refurbished that space from the Tranquility Garden to the paint. I just came from Ontario, have a company that's going to partner with us, that is actually providing us new refrigerators so that we can put meals in for youth. We'll have new carpet that's being put down. We have volunteers that are coming in to do a paint makeover. Get a chance to see what's going on, of course.
Are you there every day?
Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday.
From 3:00 to 6:30.
From 3:00 to 6:30.
And Abigail, I know you've come by with the mural dedication. Appreciate you participating in that. But get a chance to come by. Dr. Rodriguez is there, you know, frequently. Get a chance to come by and let the youth of San Bernardino City Unified School District meet the Board. They need to meet you all.
Thank you for the invitation. I just got this book.
Yes.
It's called Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And I was going to share it with the Board. It's called Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and I was going to share it with the Board later, but it's, you know, you're right on in terms of how we need to support our kids in many aspects, not just academically, in terms of protecting them, but also giving them guidance as well.
And Dr. Flores, to add to that, the pathways in terms of what's happening with regards to women who are constantly battling with regards to male-dominated industry, particularly construction industry. I'll be in conversation with them tomorrow. But when you look at the worth, the construction trade in 2022 is expected to spend $1.6 trillion, represented only by 10% of female executives and women in that industry. And they are interested in understanding a little bit more about what Project Fighting Chance has been doing to focus on their mental health at such an early age. If we can focus in on children going to prison by evaluating their third and fourth grade reading scores, we ought to be able to evaluate some of the things they do after school to see what pathways they can have for their careers. And so that's what we're going to be doing.
That's excellent.
Project Fighting Chance.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Boykins, it is time, but I had one more question for Ms. Sabios. Thank you.
I was just going to ask, Dr. Flores asked where the location was. It's off of Mount Vernon, right? Is that your Union and Mount Vernon?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Yeah, very familiar with it as well. My son used to go there a couple of years back.
Very good.
And Charles, say hi to him.
Okay, I will. I'll definitely do that.
Yeah, we'll be there. Thank you.
Thank you again, Ms. Boykins.
Thank you. Good night.
All right, next public comment is April Branson. Come on up. Good evening.
Hi, can you hear me? So I don't have a fancy speech. I have no clue. I'm just here as a parent, asking you guys for help. There is a large group of us, parents, moms, who feel like we are not getting a voice. You guys are elected to be our voice, and we do not want our children masked, we do not want vaccine mandates, and we are our children's voice, and you're supposed to be our voice, and we're not being heard. There's a large group of us that feel this way and are trying to do everything we can and just feel like we have nowhere left to do. We just have to play this game, or our kids can't go to school. And I don't think that is fair. I don't think that should be asked of any parent. Also, I just can't help but notice, you know, when I walked in here tonight, seeing the sea of people and packed house, and I was so happy, like, yes, our parents, our teachers, they care, but I was equally disheartened to see every one of them pretty much walk out of the room as soon as they were done cheering for a raise. It didn't seem like they care about the rest of this. They're clapping and cheering for the teachers to make more money, and they're not sticking around to give our children a voice, to hear what the plans are, to see where the rest of the money is going. They're not invested in all that, and that's very disheartening to see as a parent. But I just want to know, when are we going to get some answers? I mean, we're seeing that these masks are not effective. Every day, I am getting letters from my school saying, there's another COVID case, another COVID case, and then they're going to want to put group testing in place, which last time I checked, you needed my permission to do something to my child, let alone an invasive procedure. I had to sign a paper so that my child's picture could be used, but my child is automatically enrolled to get a medical test done without my consent? I don't understand how that is legal. I'm actually looking into that. I understand it put on pause, and I hope it's thrown out the window, because it is horrible for people to assume that I'm okay with my child getting a medical test done without me present, which my six-year-old, I met every doctor's appointment with him, right? Holding his hand, holding his hand at the dentist. He's not used to mommy not being there. And now someone's going to stick something up his nose without me knowing, without me being there, being present? From my understanding, most of these COVID liaisons doing the testing do not, are not required to have a medical background of any kind. What if they hurt one of these children? Has anybody thought of these things? We, as parents, don't have any answers. We are told, this is what's going on, if you happen to read the paper shoved in your child's backpack between all the other papers and drawings, then you can opt them out. But if you miss that, sorry, your kid's getting testing done, whether you are okay with that or not. That seems pretty backwards from when, you know, I guess 20 years ago, when I was in school, when my mom had to sign papers for me. And I don't understand when that decided to switch, when anyone else thought that they have a say over my child's body. I think this needs to be addressed. I don't understand how this is happening. The same thing happened with the sex ed curriculum. My child's automatically enrolled unless I opt out. Says who? I'm the parent. I should have to give permission. If I have to sign a paper for my child's picture to be shown in a yearbook, shouldn't I have to give my permission for all these things that should be up to me? And I just feel like us parents are not having a voice. You guys are supposed to be our voice, too, not just the other side. You guys are supposed to be speaking for us, too. And as I spoke to a couple of you out in the foyer, I am going to be moving if you guys come up with these vaccine mandates. I have to move my family out of this state that I was born and raised in, because I will not do that to my child with the lack of testing. I will not do it. And everything is just up in the air. If I have to move out of state, I need notice. I need to know. It can't just be, well, we haven't voted on that yet, and then get a letter saying, oh, you have to have it by June of next year. And then, oh, no, just kidding, we're not sure yet. Like, we need answers. We need you guys to vote, we need to know where you all stand on this. Several school districts have already. Apple Valley had a vote and voted against it and said they would not be enforcing it regardless. But here we are in San Bernardino, no clue, no answers. Am I selling my house? I don't know, we're going to wait and hear from you guys. When? So I'm just asking, begging you guys to please be our voice, too. Be my children's voice. What? Time? Oh, it still has time on there. Oh, extra. Okay. So does anyone have any questions for me? Or that was just the other guy? You had lots to say to him.
I do want to say.
Yes.
No, I hear your concerns, and I think example of the Board hearing the concerns, when we heard about the proposed group testing, it was a discussion that happened, and that's the reason why it's put on pause. So we, and I hear from parents who are concerned, and it does factor in. So you are being heard and listened to, and that is what drives the decisions from the Board.
But who, just curious, honestly, who made that decision to send a letter home on Friday to say your kids could be tested as soon as Tuesday?
We can't talk about it here, because it's public comments, but it is agendaized for tonight. So you can just wait for that item tonight.
So, but apparently enough people thought that was an okay idea, because it was done. Correct? Okay, well, thank you for hearing me.
Ms. Rosales-Madina?
I just wanted to clarify, were you all, was it the last Board meeting that we passed a resolution? Just wondering. It was the last Board meeting that we did pass a resolution?
It was within the last two.
I'm sorry?
I think it was within the last two resolutions.
Yes, yes. Okay, just making sure, because in case maybe they didn't see that, we did. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Madina. And thank you, Ms. Branson.
All righty, Ms. Andrea Schindler. Welcome.
Good evening, members of the Board and Cabinet. First, I want to say thank you for passing a resolution in support of exemptions and parental choice should the COVID-19 vaccine be mandated for students next year. I do have a few questions. If the COVID-19 vaccine is added to the list of required school vaccines, will exemptions be abolished? We know that past practice has been to deny exemptions for required school vaccines. So what can assure us that this would be any different with the COVID-19 vaccine? If students are allowed an exemption, will they be forced to attend distance learning? Since unvaccinated students pose no more risk than vaccinated students, this would be a discriminatory act denying them first-best instruction, which would have devastating effects on them academically, socially, and emotionally. Will these same exemptions be considered for employees, as we were not included in that resolution? It troubles me that my 20 years of experience as a teacher would be passed over for a vaccinated new hire, knowing that data from the CDC has proven that vaccinated and unvaccinated can contract and spread equally. And so therefore, hiring and terminating employees based on vaccination status is a blatant act of discrimination. What makes this mandate so different? And what I mean by that is, I think, Dr. Flores, in a previous meeting, you mentioned something about having to be careful about the wording, about there's only certain things you guys can say or do. But my question is, why is this, Governor, why is this mandate so different in comparison to the boldness that our Board used in 2017 in response to our former President's executive orders? In that resolution, you stated, be it further resolved that this district shall provide a public education regardless of a child or family's immigration status, absent of any applicable federal, state, or local law, or any court decision. Yet now, what I'm hearing you say is, you don't have the power to not follow a state mandate. Additionally, to see the statement on our school district website that school districts, including SBCUSD, have no authority over state public health mandates, while members of the Board may support the idea of a person's choice of vaccinating or not, as a public institution, they have, you have to follow, you're obligated to follow these orders issued by the California Department State Health, Department Public Health, sorry. The question I have is, was there similar, a similar disclaimer published on our website when you established that resolution, making all campuses a safe zone? Because I don't remember the district saying that while the Board of Education may support the idea of making our campuses a safe zone for students and families, they have no authority over executive orders. Basically, the message that you're telling us is that county health officials have more power than the President of the United States. Please understand from our point of view, we are watching and listening, while Boards and Superintendents in surrounding districts are creating bold resolutions and letters in opposition, many of which we provided to you, and what we're hearing from our own district is that you don't have the power to do so. As it stands, Colton District just passed a resolution in opposition of the vaccine mandate and mandated weekly testing for all, vaccinated and unvaccinated. However, we continue to only vacci, we continue to only test the unvaccinated, while knowing now more than ever that vaccinated can still get and spread it. Additionally, we continue to feed into the outdated information by telling our parents, while getting a COVID-19 vaccine may offer some natural immunity, it's not clear how long it lasts. Because children can get reinfected and have medical complications, the CDC recommends that those who've had COVID-19 still get the vaccine. Yet, I don't know if you know this, just a couple weeks ago, the CDC just published a study where they took four subgroups, and the data was from California and New York, and they studied vaccinated, never had COVID, vaccinated, have had COVID, unvaccinated, never had COVID, unvaccinated, have had COVID. And they found that the highest severe illness and mortality rates came from unvaccinated, never had COVID, slightly underrated, was vaccinated, never had COVID. The flat line, almost nothing, was unvaccinated, never had, vaccinated, had COVID, and unvaccinated had COVID. So basically saying that the risk-benefit ratio to getting the vaccine, it makes no difference if a person has had COVID or not. I will close by saying that we please remove all language in our tenants that refer to equity and nondiscrimination that can be found on our district website. If we are only willing to stand behind those beliefs when there is a law in place forcing us to do so, I would say that that's not truly our core belief. The demonstration of a core belief should be observable in all practices and should be represented regardless of any law, mandate, or politician's agenda. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schindler. Next comment will be Ms. Negretti. Welcome, Ms. Negretti.
Good evening, Miss Co-Board Members. The question is, is the recent San Bernardino City Unified School District decision to automatically enroll students into group testing illegal? I emailed you all, and I informed you of a few things. So this, and it was, and I'm repeating what I sent you, because I want parents to know, I want the public to know. This is a formal request to cease and desist the COVID group testing until SBCUSD receives written consent from parents or guardians. Parents did not grant consent to San Bernardino City Unified School District to automatically enroll children into COVID group testing. Please provide the federal, state, or health and safety code that would grant San Bernardino City Unified the authority that it has assumed. San Bernardino City Unified parents have not revoked their right to make decisions for their children, even surveys and assessments for special education require parental consent. Why would COVID testing be something that San Bernardino City Unified can do without parental consent? I strongly believe that San Bernardino City Unified intentionally sent this letter on a Friday, with such short notice that the majority of parents would not have sufficient time to seek legal advice and/or representation for their children. If SBCUSD's intent was to keep the parents unaware and uninformed, then you are winning at not making a difference. At the January 18, San Bernardino City Unified heard from the D-LAC parents who were, who inform you that they were unaware, they have a hard time, they do not get to see everything on Parent Square, and sometimes they don't even get the written forms that you send them home. Given that you were made aware of this breach, why then do this in such short notice? Today, which was on that day, January 24, that's when it was sent, for avoidance of doubt of each of the current medical procedures and products being administered by school districts and schools in California as they relate to COVID-19, they require informed consent under federal law 21 U.S. Code 360BB3 and the Health and Safety Code 24172, Section J. This is for all of you parents, please know, look it up. Note that any person who willfully fails to obtain informed consent is subject to monetary penalties, $25,000 per experiment, per health code and safety, 24176. If you, the school district, fail or refuse to cease and desist the group testing without first receiving written consent from parents or legal guardians, you face both, civil and criminal liability, personally or in your official or representative capacities. Under Business and Professions Code, Sections 2052, which could be charged, has a misdemeanor or felony, as well has a penal code 192B, Section 273A, Section 273C. In addition, under Code 21, 21 section of the federal code of regulations, it is illegal to make anyone participate in an experimental program using coercion. Under 18 U.S. Code, Section 2331, Subsection 802, within the definition of domestic terrorism, anytime a United States citizen is forced into anything they would not otherwise do, that's the coercion and domestic terrorism. Which one of these felonies do any of you want to be implicated into? Because all of them carry a 99-year sentence and a $100 million fine. You decide which of these felonies you're liable for. Thank you.
Ms. Negretti, we have one question from Ms. Rosales-Madina.
No, no, it's basically for the Board. I just wanted to clarify with the Board. I believe we had, once Board was made aware of this group testing, we made sure that we stopped it or paused this, because we didn't know this was actually happening. So I just want, so it was paused, right? It was stopped? Okay.
But paused is not the same as stopping it, and paused is not the same as granting consent, getting consent from the parents.
No, no, and I agree, no. And I'm not, I'm not just, I'm not saying anything as I don't agree with what you're saying.
What, I'm just trying to get the good clarification here, because had none of us sent you anything? I know I sent you the letter first thing I had time, and I researched what was out there. If none of us had sent you that, and this had gone through, then you would be looking at $25,000 per lawsuit? I mean, is that really what you want to see happening, because nobody's doing? You have a legal team. We don't. I mean, by Friday, when you send it in the evening, there's no way I was going to get a hold of an attorney to be able to put a stop to this. You have a legal team. The homework should have been done ahead of the letter.
Thank you, Ms. Negretti. Next public comment will be Ms. Molly.
Hi, my name is Molly Branson. I go to Caesar Chavez Middle School, and I wanted to talk about two problems that I see at our school every day. The first one is... The first one is our bus situation. So, multiple students, my friends, come in late because of the buses, and I'm not saying that's the buses problem, we have a lot of students at our school, and it takes a while to pick them all up, but they do get marked tardy for this, and then are not allowed to go to school events like games and dances. And I just don't think it's right that because the bus was late, they're not allowed to go to these school events, because that's not their fault, they just take the bus and the bus was late. And another problem that I saw was, obviously, we have PE every day, a lot of students keep their mask on when they're running, it's hot out, they're obviously getting exhausted, and a lot of them can't bring water in. So they go to our water fountains, which we have very nice ones, they have water bill, water bottle fillers, all that, right? But the actual water in them, I've seen it, and it's cloudy and gray, and it tastes really weird, and I just don't think that's good for us to be drinking water that's not even clear, it's cloudy, seeing as kids are drinking that all day, and it's probably not good. Even though we do have very nice, expensive water fountains, the thing that matters is the actual water that we're drinking every day. I'm not sure why it looks like that, but it's probably not a good thing. And another issue I wanted to talk about was our counseling. So obviously, we have SEL lessons, so we talk about roadblocks and being worried, but this is kind of a deep topic. Some of my friends talk about hurting themselves. They are severely depressed, they are having lots of problems, and on top of our school being overpopulated and already having a hard time getting to a counselor, we have multiple, it's just very hard to get an appointment with them because of how many students they see every day. I've tried to, and I never got called back at all. And when they come in for these SEL lessons, they're reading us books that look like they're for kindergartners, talking about how our emotions should feel, but they're little rhyming books. We play pick the emoji games, and I just think that some of these kids, they need to be talked to and taught how to deal with this, because they're scared, to talk to them, because they're scared that they're gonna tell their parents, and their parents are gonna get worried for them, and all this stuff is gonna happen. But I think if they combined these things into the every weekly lessons, that they would feel less scared to talk to someone about this, because it needs to be talked about and brought aware of, we can't just ignore it. It is a very deep topic, but for our age group, it is a very serious problem. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. Molly, and we will definitely be following up on your concerns with Mr. Urban's office. Dr. Flores, do you have a question?
Yes, well, clarification, first, I want to thank you for coming. I think it's really important to hear your voices. I've been on this board for a long time and always want all our students to share their voices, just like parents, really appreciate it. We're not allowed to say a lot of things, we can only ask clarifying questions, but I would like to ask you, have you brought all of these issues up to your principal?
No, I don't know how to get in touch with him. Should I ask my teachers about this? Should I go to his office? Should, yes?
Both, go to the office and say you have concerns, and it's really important. I think water should be clean.
Yeah.
You should not be drinking cloudy, yucky tasting water.
Yeah.
In terms of, of seeing your, your peers, you know, hurt themselves, that's really, really not good, and, you know, sharing that information in terms of clarifying who you go to and, and making it really, what, what Dr. Wyatt said, we'll follow up with that. And, and then the tardy, I mean, the buses are late, and so you need to bring that up to your principal as well, because it's not fair.
Yeah.
From my perspective, so.
Yeah, I don't think it's fair either.
And so, but thank you so much. Tell me your name again?
Molly, Molly Branson.
Molly?
Yes.
Molly, it looks like, oh, sorry, Dr. Flores. You're pretty popular here, you got a couple more clarifying questions, so you did a pretty good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Molly, what's your last name?
Dr. Rogers.
Branson.
Wait, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Molly.
No, you have a couple more here, that's what I meant, you have a couple more questions. Dr. Rogers.
Right. So my question is, is an additional to, and you answered it, to reach out to your, your principal, so I just wanted to know, had you done that? And so then, the second question I would say is to, I think we have a student advisory still, or something like that, if we, we definitely want these, to reach out to students, because we have a space for you to voice your concern. So if they don't get back to you, ask again about the student advisory to the superintendent, so that these are the questions we want filtered to you. But thank you so much, thank you.
Yes, of course.
All right, Ms. Molly, one more, one more. We have Ms. Savios. Thank you, Dr. Rogers.
I'm Ms. Molly. I just want to commend you. You are extremely smart, bright, and brave, because there's a lot of grown adults that come, you know, up to that podium, and they get really nervous, and you're, you were great.
Thank you.
Also, you're not the first student that I hear about the water, so I would really, you know, like for us to look into it and maybe get something in return, because my own son has complained to me about that as well, and so, it's, anyway, I'm, I'm gonna, I commend you, and I want to make sure that we look into those things.
Yes, thank you so much.
Great job.
Thank you again, Molly. Thank you for staying late, we know it's almost bedtime, so appreciate it. All right, that's it for in-person public comments, we have online public comments, Ms. Cunningham, please.
Okay, we'll start with Kim Zamora, if you're available, please unmute.
Good evening. I was just wanting to find out, I know people have already touched on it, is there any idea what a new protocol would be for testing, being that this one is paused?
Ms. Zamora, that is agendized for 7.1 this evening, and we'll be discussing that more in depth.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Sally Sukdal, if you're available, please unmute.
Welcome, Sally.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, good evening.
Hi, good evening. I first want to thank all of you for the hard work that you all do, sitting on this board for the school district. My comment today is in regards to the COVID-19 testing done at Kendall Harmon Elementary. I am aware that the group testing has been paused, but I would still like to comment on my concerns in regards to it. I am here on behalf of my, on behalf of Douglas Arnold Sukdal, Douglas is my grandson, he is four years old and has ASD, he is also nonverbal, and I feel it is my duty as his grandmother to voice concerns for him. It has come to my attention that preschool and moderate to severe SDC students will not be given COVID-19 tests because they cannot administer the tests themselves. The reason why was stated on an email that was sent out to the parents from Principal Megan Silva on January 21st. I feel this is a form of discrimination towards these students. First, you do not know if some of these children can or cannot administer the test on themselves or not. Second, I am quite sure that there are many kids that are in kindergarten on up that cannot do it themselves also. To make a decision in excluding some of the children from taking the COVID-19 test is discriminatory and wrongful, a wrongful decision. My grandson has missed weeks of school due to COVID-19 contact at Kendall Harmon. My son, Douglas Sukdal, and daughter-in-law, Genesis Sanchez-Pihoi, are also very disappointed on this decision. Today, they attended a, attended my grandson's IEP, and they were told this is due to the state of California not including these students in the COVID testing. I really feel these, these specific students in the San Bernardino Unified School District should not be left out. I'd like, I would like to know if this board is advocating for our students on this issue. Also, it is, is it this board's decision on who is eligible to be tested and who is not? All our students deserve a safe environment and peace of mind. We are still in a widespread pandemic, and I understand there are many wills to turn, but as a grandmother and advocate for my grandchildren, I feel this issue rests on the board to step up and do something about this. I am asking for all students be given their human right to be COVID-tested, just like all other students at Kendall Harmon Elementary. Thank you for your time and input on this issue.
Thank you, Ms. Sukdal, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Valerie Leonardi, if you're available, please unmute.
Welcome, Ms. Leonardi.
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to read a letter written by my son. I would like to say that I've been a teacher in the district for 25, 26 years. I have four children who have came through the district, graduates from a Royal Valley High School. My oldest son sat as student trustee on the San Bernardino Valley Chaffee College Board, and I have ties to the community as well as my family does. My son, Anthony Leonardi, who came through a Royal Valley High School after attending public school here at the district, it's green screen on mine, is it working on yours?
No, we do not see him.
Sorry, it was flashing lights on my end, I didn't know if it was working or not. So I'm going to read a letter that was written by my son for the district advocating for safety of people. My name is Anthony Leonardi, PhD, and I am a T-cell immunologist educated at Johns Hopkins 912, and did my PhD at the National Cancer Institute on T-cell function dysfunction and immunity. I discovered the dominant mechanism of how T-cells differentiate. I am writing to guarantee further Omicron variant surge and spread in classrooms due to the extreme level of diversity and evolution Omicron has been undergoing. Omicron has already evolved into three quite distinct versions, BA1, BA2, and BA3, that are highly distinct from each other, meaning reinfection is facilitated. There are early reports of reinfections where a person caught Omicron and then caught another version of Omicron weeks later. In a recent massive study, 2/3 of infections by Omicron were reinfections in the recent wave. Also, Alzheimer's-like brain changes were seen in people after infection with SARS-CoV-2. In my opinion, kids who were infected before will easily be reinfected by Omicron. Omicron's new version, BA2, is spreading most quickly among children in Denmark. Companies are racing to create new vaccines for Omicron. In my, in my opinion, our old vaccines won't work as well and will be significantly reduced in efficacy. In my opinion, there is no way to guarantee safe classrooms, so I advise remote learning. In cases where this will not occur, there must be masking and air filtration with Corsi Rosenthal boxes and ventilation of at least MERV-13 standard. Teachers will need at least N95 or better respirators, kids at least N95 as well, since N95s are difficult to source for children, at least surgical masks, but these will not fully protect. Cloth masks are not enough. We are facing a dual BA1 and BA2 Omicron surge. It has not been two years, and we have already seen a highly evolved variant emerge that very likely requires new vaccines. We need to think about our infrastructure and sustainability and how education is delivered. Catching SARS-CoV-2 every one or two years or months is not wise, nor is it just to expect of children. It is a virulent SARS virus, not a common cold, and has evolved to become more severe. Anthony Leonardi. And I don't, I'm trying to see if my timer is still showing. Just let me know when my time is up.
Still have a minute, Ms. Leonardi.
I think that the messaging needs to change, and that people need to be educated to understand what it is that COVID-19 and what this virus does. Just as in sixth grade, we have standards in which the students are learning about virus and cells and bacteria, it seems that it would be an easy thing for people to, for us, for us as a school, to educate and show what the virus, COVID-19, is doing on, in humans. And there's enough studies and documentation and, and just as well as looking at the virus and looking at the photos and the, that have already been shown on slides of what this virus does.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leonardi.
And our last call should be Melissa Renee, if you're available, please mute. Unmute.
Welcome, Ms. Renee.
Hello, I have had the pleasure of speaking with you guys several times, and first and foremost, I just want to say thank you so much for the resolution. You know, I, I really commend the action that you have taken, because I know the pressure, I don't envy you, and I realize that these are very challenging times. So, I did want to say that. I also wanted to commend Molly, that was amazing, to see a young person that was, you know, so well spoken and getting active, but, so I wanted to definitely speak and just give my, my perspective on the testing, and, and just in general, especially after listening to the speeches, you know, I wasn't really going to talk about COVID-19 in general, just because I think that's been done, you know, but I'm, I'm, I'm getting very weary of the fear mongering, you know, because the only thing that should matter are the numbers and the facts. I could care less about people's feelings or opinions or emotions, and I'm really tired of hearing about it. It should not affect policy, we don't care how you feel, 1,000 children roughly out of 73 million have died, that's it, since the beginning of the pandemic. And those numbers are extremely low, and it is a tragedy for one child to have died, but children are at very little risk from COVID-19. Most kids now have natural immunity, many have been vaccinated, and frankly, especially for children, Omicron is nothing more than a cold. And so I, I really think that that should be the basis of the decisions that we're making, there's no reason to mask children in schools, because the numbers do not support that. There's no reason to mask children in shops, restaurants, parks, I mean, there, there's no reason. I have a special needs child as well, and my special needs child actually has a speech delay, and you know what's not helping my child? Having a mask on his face for the entire time he's trying to learn how to talk. So, you know, with respect, you know, I understand that people are afraid, I understand that, that people are trying to do what's best for their children, but when you doing what's best affects my ability to raise my children and to have them grow and learn and adapt, you know, children learn by mimicry, facial expressions of friends and teachers, it's important. And there should be no testing without a parent's involvement and express consent, you know, and I'm, I'm just, I'm troubled, and this is not something that's unique to San Bernardino at, by any means, but I'm, I'm definitely troubled by the trend that the schools are trying to do more and more and more for our children, and taking more of the responsibility away from the parents. And this is definitely an overreach, I mean, a tremendous overreach, to even think to send out any type of communication stating that you're going to be doing a medical procedure on our children, and we're not even going to potentially know about it, but we're just gonna, oh, well, you know, your silence essentially is- and we're not even going to potentially know about it, but we're just gonna, oh, well, you know, your silence essentially is, is considered consent. That is crazy. I mean, I, I have three boys, you know, I, I would not allow that. That's not okay with me. It needs to be with my permission, and frankly, I want to be there. If you're going to be doing anything, shoving anything up their nose, I want to be there. Um, and so I just, I wanted to lend my voice to the supporters here. I, I, I don't have a big, long speech prepared. Um, you know, but I'm, I'm definitely asking you guys to continue to fight for us, to continue to do what's right, um, even if it's uncomfortable, and to, to continue to be the leaders that you are. Um, and then last, I wanted to say, um, that, you know, I, I, I want to definitely share my condolences for Dr. Hill. Um, my husband had her as a teacher, and, and he was a huge troublemaker, and he's, he had such, um, glowing words for her that one of the reasons that he, he got as far as he did was, was because of, of her. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Renee.
And that's all the public comments right now.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. And we'll go back to four point two. Let me check my list here for resolution and recognition of school counseling week. And four point two will be Ms. Rosales Medina.
Thank you so much. So it is resolution four point two, resolution in recognition of national council, a school counseling week. Whereas school counselors are active, committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development. And whereas school counselors help families focus on ways to further their educational, personal, and social growth of their children. And whereas school counselors are instrumental in helping students, teachers, and families deal with personal trauma as well as tragedies in their communities and in the United States, as it was mentioned earlier by a student Molly. Whereas school counselors help students cope with their drastic shift in their life, in their living and learning environments over the last two years by responding to students' new and ongoing needs through academic planning, developing social emotional learning competencies, coping strategies, and new ways to socialize, and even through life savings interventions in some cases. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of San Bernardino City Unified School District joins California and the nation in recognizing February seventh through the eleventh, twenty twenty-two as National School Counseling Week, and encourages all schools to promote, to promote awareness of the role school counselors play in preparing students for fulfilling lives and contributing members, contribute, as contributing members of society.
Move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All right.
You can turn off my light. I turned it on by accident.
Let's vote. All right, resolution carries. Four point three, resolution and recognition of President's Day, Dr. Daddy Rogers.
Thank you. Four point three, rec, resolution and recognition of President's Day. Whereas in eighteen eighty-five, February twenty-second, Washington's birthday became a nationally recognized federal holiday. And whereas under the Uniform Monday Holiday Act in nineteen seventy-one, President Richard Nixon passed an executive order officially moving Washington's birthday to the third Monday in February. And whereas although Washington's birthday is a federal holiday, states are free to name this holiday as they wish. And whereas Presidents Washington and Lincoln still remain the two most recognized leaders, President's Day is now popularly seen as a day to recognize and honor the lives and achievement of those who have served in the office of President of the United States. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District does join California and the nation in celebrating President's Day on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, and encourages district teachers to include not only George Washington and Abraham Lincoln, but other presidents' contributions as part of the history of our nation. So move.
Second.
Been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. Hey, motion carries. Four point four, resolution and recognition of Ronald Reagan Day. Ms. Savios.
Whereas Ronald Wilson Reagan was born on February sixth, nineteen eleven, and served as California's thirty-third governor from nineteen sixty-seven to nineteen seventy-five. And whereas Ronald Reagan was known for his small-town values of hard work tolerance and the importance of education. And whereas President Reagan was sworn in as the nation's fortieth president on January twentieth, nineteen eighty-one, and continued to serve until nineteen eighty-nine, a period when our nation experienced unprecedented economic growth and prosperity. And whereas the state of California has declared February sixth to be Ronald Reagan Day. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of San Bernardino City Unified School District encourages all district schools to undertake educational activities on February sixth, twenty twenty-two to honor the life and accomplishments of Ronald Reagan. So moved.
I'll second. So it's in moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote. All right, motion carries. Let's move on to six point O, reports by union organizations. Six point one, San Bernardino Teachers Association. All right, no report. Six point two, California School Employees Association.
Yes, we have one.
Good evening, President Wyatt, board members, superintendent cabinet, and those in attendance. My name is Latoya Smith, Chief Stewart for CSCA Chapter one eighty-three. Um, we first want to give our condolences to Dr. Hill's family. Um, she was such a wonderful person. Anytime you saw her, she had a smile and a hug for you. And I, we know our members and our chapter are definitely going to miss her. Um, we would like to thank the board for your approval of our wages. We know that our members really need this, especially during these difficult times, and we want to acknowledge our members who are going above and beyond to assist with keeping the schools running. It has literally been all hands on deck when it comes to what's happened. And some examples of what the members are doing to go above and beyond is some of our clerical staff have been asked to go to different school sites than their primary site due to lack of staffing and assisting the sites. Um, custodial staff, MNOs, CSOs, office staff, and cafeteria workers are working overtime to get things done due to staff shortages, district meetings, or after-school activities or events. Um, our secretaries, who have sometime needed to be the recade, the receptionist, on top of their own duties. And our site district IT upgrading the computers to ensure that our students have dependable equipment throughout the school sites. And our health aides, who have now had taken on new responsibilities with this Hazel Health that are at, that has been implemented at the school sites and due to COVID. Our members have been working tirelessly, and we want them to know that we see them, we appreciate them, and we're working with the district to come to terms on some of these items and topics and issues that, um, have arisen. Um, lastly, we want to thank the board for looking into getting that COVID time back um, when it wasn't technically, um, on campus or outside, when it was outside of the district. Uh, we had many employees who actually lost time and money, um, because of lack of time. And so we appreciate you, um, the board, giving us the opportunity to have the time back to assist the, um, members who had to deal with that during the corne, um, COVID quarantines and exposures. So we want to just thank you for your partnership and our, um, your continued support of our members, and we thank you, and we hope that you have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Good to hear from you. Oh, Ms. Smith, we had a, a comment from Dr. Flores.
Smith, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
I, I want to thank you and all our classified employees for stepping up and going beyond. And that's truly, you know, how would I say, it, it's truly, um, thankful, uh, from the bottom of our hearts because we know it's hard and it's difficult and to, you know, and, and it's you guys that help to run everything. And everybody stepping in for each other is just sharing kindness with each other. And also for the kids and the teachers and for our community. So please let the, please let everybody know, classified employees know, that we thank them from the bottom of our hearts for all of the work that they're doing.
Well, do you thank you so much?
Well said. Thank you, Dr. Flores. Alrighty, six point three, Communication Workers of America. No report. Six point four, San Bernardino School Police Officers Association.
No report.
All right, no report. We'll move on to seven point O, reports and presentations. Seven point one, COVID nineteen student testing practice and procedure discussion.
Thank you, Doc, President, uh, Dr. Wyatt.
Pardon me, Dr. Rodriguez. No, we had a public comment and just a point of order. Does the public comment go first? I believe it does. Okay. All right, so we, oop, let me find it. We had Ms. Melissa H., uh, had a public comment on seven point one. Welcome.
Before you start, I, I need a clarification from Dr. Wyatt. Can we engage in dialogue, uh, Dr. Wyatt? If it's agenda.
No, this, I think again is a public comment, so I think we can only ask.
It's agenda, but are we able to have a conversation or, or not?
No, we are not. And that, last time we had that, we found out that we were not to have.
We're not allowed to do that?
That's correct. During the, during the presentation, we can have a dialogue, but not with our, um, employees, but not with public comment.
Okay, so we just listen now?
Yes, ma'am.
We can't?
Because I have a question. So at what point would that be appropriate?
Hopefully, it's answered during the presentation. If not, then we'll have to have somebody from the superintendent's office get back to you.
Okay. All right. That's it.
Um, Ms. Melissa H., I think you still asked a question, if that's what you wanted to do. No? All right. Thank you very much. All right, Dr. Rodriguez. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Thank you, President, uh, Dr. Wyatt. Um, this report status update was requested by, uh, President Wyatt and Vice President Tillman. And so we're very, um, happy to present this information, um, and to foster the discussion around, uh, student testing practices and procedure. Next slide, please. The objectives of this particular, um, presentation are to provide, again, a status update on the following. We want to give you information about our current COVID situation and number of cases that we have in the district. We want to review the current California Department of Public Health guidance. We also want to review the tracing methods that are now available to us, and then have a conversation around, uh, next steps. Next slide, please. So we, we, we showcase this slide to just kind of get us grounded and remember as we started looking at dealing with COVID and reopening of schools, the decisions that are made and the conversations that we have are around these guiding principles. First being, we ensure health and physical safety of staff and, and students and staff. We adhere to federal, state, and county guidance, uh, provide high-quality learning experiences, and provide safe and accessible working conditions. I'd also like to just remind all of us that as, uh, we move in the conversation, there is no public mandate at this time that causes school closures. Next slide, please. So we'll talk a little about our current, uh, COVID conditions and, in respect to the number of cases we have in the district. And so with that, I will pass it over to, uh, Safety Officer Vettier.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez, and good evening, board. Um, next slide, please. So board and, uh, Ms. Medina, this was in response to the last board meeting where we were trying to get, um, more representation just on the cases within our school district. So I asked our partners with AM to provide us a similar chart as to what we view with, uh, the county website. It's just relative to our school district. So this is a chart, um, representing COVID cases which impacted our district from August of this year, when we opened schools on the far left side there, through January twenty-fifth, which is on the far right side. Um, as you can see, in the week leading up to return from winter break and the two subsequent weeks, we saw positive cases increase. Uh, this was similar to what we were seeing throughout our community. COVID cases peaked for us at about three hundred and twenty new cases being reported on January eighteenth. Similarly to what we're seeing in the community, uh, we are seeing the steady decrease in cases. Many students and staff have returned to school this, uh, and work this week. So we are seeing the, the drop, um, from the winter surge. Next slide, please. On, uh, January fourteenth, the California Department of Public Health, um, issued new K-through-twelve guidance. Uh, and these are recommendations. They always have been recommendations for the most part through, uh, public health. There are very few things that are mandates. Um, most of the handling of COVID is recommendations. And so the new recommendations that came out is the group, uh, tracing guidance that says schools should notify students who spend more than a cumulative total of fifteen minutes over a twenty-four-hour period in a shared indoor airspace. So this changed from the six-foot distance to, if you're in a classroom together, we're going to call that a shared indoor airspace. Notifications to, uh, all the occupants of that room should go out to the families, um, rather than contact tracing just who was sitting next to each other. And then what that allows is for self-testing, so we don't swab, our, our AM liaisons do not swab anyone. All the tests are self-administered. With parent consent, students, uh, can, can do this on themselves three to five days after exposure. So if I'm exposed on a Monday to someone in my class, um, a letter would go home saying, in three to five days, we will begin testing. This gives the families who have already opted in a second chance if they chose to then opt out. They can do that, and they have three to five days. So it's not a same-day process. And this also allows students to remain in school this whole time, uh, as long as they stay asymptomatic and they don't have any symptoms. So this keeps the quarantine process down. It keeps our students in school. And so with that, and to go into a little more, um, a little clearer breakdown of those, I'm going to turn it over to our partners from AM LLC. Um, and Jade's going to walk us through that. Next slide, please.
Mr. Vettier, uh, before we go to the next slide.
All right. Thank you, Eric, and good evening, board. My name is Jade Stewart, COVID Liaison Program Manager with AM LLC. And I am here tonight with Dr. Godwin Orke, AM LLC's Regional Director for School Health Programs.
Jade, can you take a pause, please? We have a question.
This slide shows recommendations and options for managing COVID in the school setting. There are two recommended models by CDPH for managing COVID, individual tracing and group tracing. The hybrid approach allows schools to use components from both models to meet the needs of the school. Our district is currently following an individual tracing approach.
Dr. Rodriguez, I asked, I asked her to pause during the, in chat.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Vettier, uh, we had a question on the last slide, please. Updated group testing guidance from Mr. Tillman.
Yes, and, uh, just so I'm clear, I know you guys have a prepared presentation, but the key for me is.
Okay. David, should I continue?
No, not yet. Um, the, the board has some couple of questions for, for Eric.
Can she hear us?
I'll just pick up where I left off. Um, our district is currently following an individual tracing approach, which you'll see in the left-hand column. With this approach, all students that are a close contact are placed on a modified quarantine. This method is very labor-intensive with attempts to reach families. This model also keeps students out of school more than the state has found is necessary. Uh, David asked me to stop again.
Yeah, Jade, can you, can you hear me?
And thank you for, uh,
Yes.
taking a little break there. We did have a question for Mr. Vettier, so.
Yeah, and, and really, this presentation. And, and really, this presentation is only going to work if we are able to interject the concerns that we have. So my, the starting point for me should be, what is the proposed changes? And, and my primary concern is making sure there aren't any changes where it isn't easy, easy to understand that we're going to wait to get a parent's consent. That's just my, my, just my input. But it has to be clear, I don't want to have a whole presentation and not know where that part fits in. So I, I want to be clear on, here's what we're doing now, and here's what the proposed change is. And do those proposed changes include what went out in the parent square? We said, there's going to be automatic group testing, you have to write something to opt out. And then if you don't, there's consequences if you don't agree to certain things. And that's not in this presentation, but I read that from a, from a, a parent who received it live and had concern right in front of me at my job. So I know the concerns are there, and I, and I want to make sure we figure out a way to allow the Board to weigh in if we're going to do that or not. Thank you.
It looks like it's in the next steps.
Yeah, I was just going to make that comment. Thank you, Mr. Tillman, Vice President Tillman, absolutely. We have heard the parents, we have heard our Board. Any testing that is done will have parent consent. There will not be a blanket, a passive consent, it will be an active consent. So parents will have, they have to get permission. It will not be an automatic, we're testing.
And there won't be consequences if a parent doesn't agree to the automatic testing?
The only consequence would be that we would have to follow the guidelines around excluding the student from school because they're not getting tested.
How's that different from what they're doing now?
It's the same thing we're doing now. So if the student is, if the student, if the parent does not give consent to test the student in the group testing model as we're going to that, as we're discussing that, it would just fall to the practice that we're doing now where the student goes home for a certain amount of days, and then the student would then come back. So in the hype, go ahead.
But I think the key is this. The current practice now is what, when someone's identified?
The current practice now is individual tracing approach. Let's, let's go to the next slide. So we're not.
Can we at least just go through the presentation? Because at, at least if we go through the presentation, then we'll have a chance to allow the Board to ask questions. We haven't even gotten through the presentation. I, I got a fear, I got a fear that the presentation is not going to answer those questions, but I'll wait. But I think, I, I think it's, it's a mistake to go through this without it being clear what the concerns are from the parents. And I know what those concerns are.
Yes.
And I looked at this presentation, and it's going to go high-level, and you're really not going to have the details about what that parent is going to have to experience that's different than what we're doing right now. That's what my concern is.
But Dr. Rodriguez will answer those questions if we can go through the presentation. She will be able to answer the questions. Flores and Ms. Rosales Medina, will we be able to wait until we get through the presentation? Alright, thank you very much.
Okay, Jade, we'll have you go back, and we'll restart back at the individual tracing approach, which is our current method at this time. So please review that.
Sure, no problem. So again, our district is currently following an individual tracing approach, which you see in the left-hand column. With this approach, all students that are a close contact are placed on a modified quarantine. This method is very labor-intensive with attempts to reach families. This model also keeps students out of school more than the state has found is necessary. The group tracing approach in the middle was provided as an option in mid-January. The model identifies all students within a shared indoor airspace of a positive case, such as a classroom. It removes the need to identify who was within six feet and treats an entire classroom as impacted. In this model, students whose parents consent to testing three to five days after the exposure may remain in the classroom for instruction and participate in all activities. Students would only be sent home if their parents did not agree to testing or if the student became positive or, or symptomatic. Our team, having managed COVID with you since August and through the winter surge, recommends the district use a hybrid approach on the far-right. To provide an example of what that looks like, if a third-grade student tests positive at an elementary school, the COVID liaison would use a group-based tracing approach for the classroom. The liaison would send a letter home notifying families of an exposure and remaining families, and reminding families, rather, who have opted in to test, that testing will begin in three to five days. For areas outside the classroom setting, such as school buses, libraries, music, or sports, the COVID liaison may use the individual tracing model, specifically engaging those students who had direct and close contact to a positive case. Using a hybrid approach will allow the district to provide the same guidance and instructions to parents and guardians. There's also flexibility with the hybrid approach. This means if individual contact tracing of classrooms is needed for secondary schools, that is an option. Now with that, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Rodriguez for any questions.
Thank you, Jade. So we're going to pause? We're going to finish? Okay. So let's go to the next slide. So as we wrap up, this is our last slide in the presentation. What we would like to do is to move forward with obtaining active parent consent for testing students with the rapid testing. So we would, we want to move forward with that. And then we would like to implement a hybrid tracing approach, which basically is what we're doing now with the addition of group testing in, in classrooms where we have indoor shares, indoor shared airspace, especially in our elementary schools. As, as far as next steps, we also want to make sure that we're getting input from our stakeholder groups. So we will have these conversations with our parent advisory groups. And then whatever is decided, we will make sure that communication with families in multiple ways, media as well as flyers are sent so that parents have enough time, not two days, not even a week, but have enough time to make, to make a decision that they believe is in the best interest of their family. Thank you.
Dr. Rodriguez, was, I see a slide after that. What is that? It looked like there was a slide after that. Is that just learning in action? Was that a video or something?
No, that's, that's the last slide.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Alright, obviously, we have some questions and comments. We'll go with Mr. Tillman, and Dr. Flores, and Ms. Rosales Medina.
So let's go to the page where it says tracing testing approaches. So the key is, well, you say test at, on the individual tracing approach? I'm assuming that's what we do now?
So what we do now, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And, and on, for elementary kids in particular, are the parents always present during tests?
No.
And how do they get the permission to test the elementary kid now?
Right now, we have parent permission to test students. So they call the parent. Many of them have already communicated with them. They call them up to say, "Hey, your student is showing symptoms. You know, would you like us to test them?" They go through that process.
They say no, what happens?
They say no, then they are asked to pick up their child and have them go home. And they are then out of school, cannot come back until after five days.
As for kindergarten, well, I guess pre-K, all the way through high school?
Yes.
And then, so with the, the new testing for, let's say, the middle school and high school, students go to six or seven different classes. So if there were six, and I'm, and I only know this because at work, right now, every day, someone's testing positive. And I have a job about 100 people, which, so that's not too much different than a classroom. So you could, because you're going to seven different classes, it's, you could conceivably be in a different class every day where someone tests positive. Does that mean you're going to test people every day?
So because of that, we know that that is going to be something that is an entirely different animal. So with the hybrid testing model, it will allow us to still utilize the individual where it's like, we're asking the student, "Who were you around within your six feet in more than 15 minutes?" So it allows us to continue to do that. Or should we choose to do an actual group testing where we end up testing six or seven classes? So this allows us the flexibility in a hybrid model to do either one, depending on the situation that we encounter.
The purpose of the test is for what?
The purpose of the test is so that students can stay in school. So in the.
So if they test positive, they still stay in school?
No, sir. If they, if they're positive, they go home. But in the individual model that we have now, everybody goes home, if they're sick or not, because they've been exposed. In the group testing, they're allowed to stay in school and test. If they're found to positive, they're sent home. And the other ones stay in school because they're negative.
I, I personally think what you're going to find, number one, I think we, we, we can't do tests unless we have parent consent. And the parent consent should be, you know, you get notified, and it has to be some mechanism where the parent can test themselves, and that will allow the student to continue. It can't be, if you don't allow us to test the student in group testing, then you got to go home and you can't come back. That can't be.
Correct. So if this, if the parent wants to come to the school and they don't want for us to administer the test, meaning that the student does it themselves, and they say they want to come to the school and be there and administer the test, we have no issue with that.
Or, or they can test at home by themselves?
Or they can test at home and make sure that they bring back the, the results.
I think that's, but I also think, and I think, here's the part we missed. Somebody has to have the common sense to say, "This is totally unmanageable. Too many people are being affected, and so you can't do it." That's a possibility. And the, the part that scares me is, I don't think we're factoring that in. This guide is not magical, and I think it's totally unmanageable. There's no way you can test all these people every day, day in and day out, especially when you consider students going to different classes. And when you look at the level of illness right now, it's not great. So if you didn't, if you, if, for instance, if you just allow parents to test when they see the symptoms like, it's like the adults do, and do the same test we were doing in the past, I think that was suffice, knowing that you're not going to get everybody, but everybody working together. Because the key is to get buy-in from everyone. I, I think if we know for, I know for a fact, it's a rare flag to tell parents, "We're going to test your kid on any given day based on the date that we receive." That's not going to work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Dr. Flores?
I have a few questions. So following up with what Mr. Tillman said, I, I was thinking about high school kids and middle school kids and how they go from classroom to classroom, and how could we possibly keep track of everybody? That's, that's a big issue and a management issue. Not, let alone, you know, for giving parents enough notice, you know, to opt out. And so, so, so the question I have, I have several questions. Is it true, because I heard it earlier, that we sent out a letter on the 24th? Was that a Friday?
Yes, we did send out a letter on the.
And what was specifically in that letter?
In that letter, we discussed the need, due to the County Health Department telling us that we needed to move forward with group testing, that we needed to implement that.
Okay. And were they told that if they didn't, how were they told that their kids? I mean, how did you guys decide to send the letter, I mean, and the contents of the letter? How was, how were those decisions made?
So back to the guiding principles, there has been a movement in this district that whenever there is guidance from the County Health Department, that we follow it. And so when we had cases that were surging, and we, they were getting very behind in the number of the, the cases as well as tracing, the County Health Department told us that they wanted us to move to the testing model because they couldn't keep up with us.
So they are the ones that recommended that our district move to the, okay, the decision to do that?
And then we went to additional meetings to ask, is there anything else that we can do? Because it is very labor-intensive, and we have 46,000 students in this district. And in asking those questions, we were told then we were able to implement a hybrid approach, so it would not be a blanket that we had to test everybody.
Okay, so in that letter, were parents given the option to opt out?
Yes.
They were? Okay. I think, I've been listening, and I think that it wasn't explained that you, we were going to do the same stuff when somebody came in contact with a positive case, that, you know, sending the kids home willy-nilly. I don't think it was explained that when there's positive, positive tests in a classroom, that everybody, right, has to, in, in the past, they had to go home anyway, right? The ones that came in, into contact?
When they came into contact, yes.
Okay, so how is that different than group testing in terms of contact tracing? Isn't it the same?
A little different. Before in the.
Let me explain myself. They're sharing the same air. So it, there's positive cases in there. So everybody is affected, right? So the contact tracing is now in place because all of them were affected, correct?
I'm going to have our health people, they'll probably be better at answering that question than I would. So.
I'm, I, I think the parents are confused. They think that because they opt out, the kids are being sent home. I mean, that, I mean, that's not the case. The case is, they've been in contact with a positive case, and that's why they're being sent home. They're not being sent home because they didn't take the tests. They're being sent home because they came in contact with a positive person, until they show symptoms, or, or.
I'm going to have Jade answer your question.
Okay.
Thank you. Jade, are you on the line?
I am, and Eric, I, I saw you on mute earlier. Is this one that you wanted to take?
No, you're fine. And, and Dr. Flores was, was on, on track with it. So in this, in the individual contact tracing model, you're looking at the six-foot circle. And so you're looking at who sits next to a student, and you're contacting those students and those families. Very labor-intensive, very time-consuming to, to, to get a hold of all those families. And what was happening is, as that process was taking place, other students in those classrooms were then exhibiting symptoms or calling, saying they were positive. And so what the state did with this move towards this shared space, and, and you hit it right on the head, Dr. Flores, is they're saying this entire classroom is impacted. So instead of looking at just a six-foot circle, what we want you guys to do is just treat the classroom as an, as an exposure. Give everybody the opportunity to test in three to five days. Instead of some kids right now, and then we wait for another week, and then some other kids start to get symptoms, and then we test them. Let's just test them all quickly so that we can determine who is exhibiting symptoms or who is positive to give those families and those students clear guidance quicker. So it's actually a safer, quicker method to do the group testing than the individual six-foot circle radius testing. Because that was, we were getting so far behind that by the time we got one six-foot circle done, there was more kids in the same class that we were having to start the whole process over with.
I have another concern. I have another concern, Mr. Vettier. So who determined three to five days? Is it three to five, is it three days or is it five days that they have to stay home?
And the three to five days is the testing, when the testing can begin, and that's CDPH. So if we use an example.
So they have to go home, they have to go home right when they're exposed?
No, ma'am, not with the group testing model. They actually get to stay in school. So they do not have to go home at any point during the group testing model, so long as that they stay asymptomatic, so they don't start experiencing any symptoms, and they stay negative when they test day three to five. So they're, they're, it's, it's simply an exposure letter to the family saying, "Your child was exposed to a positive case. We're going to begin testing of the classroom in three to five days."
Well, I think there's misinformation and miscommunication. Well, I think there's misinformation and miscommunication. And also, I, I don't, I don't know if you guys gave the parents the option. If, if the kids are showing no symptoms, why do they have to be tested? I, I'm just raising the question, yeah.
Because there are many, there are, and, and again, this is CDPH's recommended management guidance. So this is what they're telling us. Here's how you should manage it. And so there are many people that have COVID that are asymptomatic. And so this allows us to make sure that this, knowing that there's been an exposure in a classroom, knowing that somebody was positive in the classroom, offer the opportunity for them to test day three to five to see if there's other students that are now positive, whether or not they're experiencing symptoms or not. So to stop it, right? So to send, if, if Eric is asymptomatic, but he's testing positive, okay, we wanna remove Eric from that environment so that we don't continue the spread of COVID throughout the school.
Then I have these nightmare, nightmare scenarios in my mind that say all the kids will be out for five days and then you come back again and you get somebody else that's exposed. And then when are the kids gonna get instruction? I mean, those are just scenarios in my mind, you know, if it just keeps, you know, geometrically scaling up, I'm just, I mean, I- Are there other districts that are doing this and have been doing this and how have they handled it? Do we know?
So, and, and that's, and that's where we're at right now, is different districts are handling COVID in different methods. There are some districts within our own county that are simply sending students that are ill home and saying, please return with a doctor's note. They're not necessarily providing testing. They don't have personnel on schools with test kits. They're simply sending everybody home and saying, your child needs to be tested. We recommend you get your child tested. They don't, they haven't offered the services that you as a board have instructed us to offer since day one, where we've brought all the test kits in, we've brought liaisons in, we've done drive-throughs, we're trying to be the hub for our community. There are school districts that are not doing that. And so that, that's the challenge that we face and frankly, that you as a board face right now, is most of the things we're doing with COVID are recommendations by CDPH. Very few of the things that we're doing to manage COVID are you musts. And so, you know, we're bringing forward what CDPH is saying, this is the best practice, this is a recommendation, but they're really putting it onto the individual school boards across the, the state to make those decisions for themselves. So there are school districts in our county that are not doing half the things that we're doing or managing COVID half as well as we are. I hope that answered your, your question, Dr. Flores.
Partially. I have more, but I'll let my other colleagues move. And I, I may come back.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Right. First of all, I wanted to say, Mr. Vatier, thank you for the chart that you provided and that gives me more of a visual since I'm more of a visual learner. And so with regards to the, the testing for, I guess the question is, and this can go back to Jade as well, or Dr. Rodriguez, is regarding the exposure letter, and I guess I'm trying to find out, cause I'm hearing so many different things now. And I'm hearing the district side and I've also heard from the parents. So within, while we were doing the group testing, cause as you're saying, it makes sense, right? It does make sense, but I guess the question would be, were our, our students being tested without parents' permission? And I guess that's the big no-no of what if that was happening and, and so I just wanted to get clarification on that piece. Anybody, I don't know if they can answer that. Eric or Jade?
No, no, Ms. Medina, they have not, nor is it our intention to test any child without parental permission.
Well, I'm hearing it from the audience, but, and is there? So I, I know there was also an example, like for instance, the parents that, you know, don't want their children being, you know, taken, photos being taken of the students. Is there a letter that parents sign that gives permission for, for testing? I'm just curious if that's something that we do have.
So there's two different methods right now. What has been done since the beginning is consent through the primary health platform. And that is what, again, we've been doing since the beginning with testing. So a parent signs that consent in our primary health platform that remains on file. And then anytime a student tests, our liaison would call the parent and get a verbal confirmation of consent that they want to test again in that instance. So that's what's been done to this point. The additional type of consent that we've been discussing is the opt-in or opt-out. And that is only going forward as an active form of consent from this point.
And then following with that one, for instance, let's just say, cause I know that we've had unfortunately been lacking a little bit in, in how parents are receiving communications. So let's just say a parent didn't get the memo, didn't look through the backpack thoroughly, cause you know, the reality is we have many families that you don't necessarily, they're doing, you know, they're working and, and so forth. So if a student is in that situation, they go to school and you haven't received the verbal consent, the parent is not even aware that they need to be tested, what happens then?
No, students would be tested without confirmation of consent.
And then they would be sent home or what would, what would, I'm just curious to see what that would, what that would look like?
Right. If, if there's no confirmation of consent, then the student would be, the parent would be called to pick the student up.
Are we, we, are we, how are we making sure this is happening across the board? Because, you know, we, we're a large school district and we have many school sites and we have many students. And so are we reporting or is there something to be jotted down? You're having the news and the student's name and there's like a checkmark, notified parent? How are we making sure that we're not, cause apparently I'm hearing that there has been students that were tested without parent notification? How are we ensuring that we're not making those mistakes?
So there are internal processes that we follow to, to verify that consent or verbal confirmation of consent is received each time. And that's documented within the different platforms that we use. Whenever a question about this is raised, we do meet with our district partners, Dr. Rodriguez, Eric, we meet with them twice a day, every day, Monday through Friday. And whenever a topic comes up that they'd like us to investigate and look into, we do that. So there's constant communication. If there's any questions that come up about this, we investigate.
Okay. And, and like I said, it does make sense after hearing how the explanation is with group tracing, not necessarily testing. And it's only, as parents know, this is you have, there was a student that they were exposed to. And so we need to make sure that they're being tested if at home or they just have to wait a certain amount of days. Is that, is that the hybrid model that we're trying to look at as a consideration? Or is that something? Cause it's like a combination of both, right? It's, it's both doing the group tracing and for those that, you know, can't meet with the group taste, tracing or testing, then they move into the regular model that we have.
Right. We know that a one-size-fits-all isn't gonna work for our district. So that's why we would like to move toward a hybrid model where we can do both depending on the circumstance.
Yeah, and, and that was good for the clarif-, I guess just making sure that we are not testing. I think that's the priority on this sense, making sure that we're not testing without parents' consent. And if they can set that at all school sites, to make sure there's no errors in that. I do wanna mention, cause a parent that made a public comment, or a grandparent, Sally, Sally, with regards to her grandson, now there's students with, with, you know, different needs that cannot do the testing themselves. So how do we ensure? Because I mean, that's still something that we need to have them participate. What are we gonna do as next steps to make sure that we're also including them in this?
So Ms. Medina, the CDPH was actually set to release guidance today for us as it relates, so the, the program that we're operating under right now is K through 12. And as far as testing, they have to be able to self-swab. So this takes out the fears of somebody else doing a medical procedure to somebody else. So they have to be able to self-swab and, in, in accordance with the manufacturer. And so the manufacturer of the rapid Bionix test kits does not, has it written in there that anyone under the age of five, it should not be used on. And because they cannot self-swab. And so our schools, we don't want people assisting. We don't want people putting stuff in other people's noses. And so that, that is not just for our school district, but that is across the state. And CDPH was set to release guidance today that spoke to preschools and also basically anyone who, who not, who, who can't self-swab. And we, we think mod severe classes, we think preschools, but it's really anyone who's unable to self-swab. We are looking at other options with the PCR kits that does allow for that with either healthcare provider or the parent's assistance. And so we're exploring those options for both of those scenarios. But the state was actually supposed to release guidance today. I haven't seen it yet. But they were due to release it today because this is a statewide problem right now with the test kits as far as those populations.
Yes, and we have nurses and, 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 you know, Harmon Elementary School, we do have nurses there, right? That could assist with or perform the, the swabbing on students who cannot do it themselves, if of course, once a parent already made the consent?
We're looking into doing that. So that has not been decided at this point because all of the testing has been supervised by AM. And so to bring in another party, we need to continue that conversation.
Also making sure that we're looking at those alternative tests because as Mr. Vatier mentioned, you know, certain tests, you cannot do it. It only goes by self-swabbing, self-testing. So we should look into the alternative for the, for those that do need assistance because the reality is we wanna make sure we're providing all students the opportunity to test as well. And, and that includes our students who cannot do the swabbing themselves. So if we can look at that, look into the type of testing that we need individuals as soon as possible too, to make sure that they're also included.
We'll do-
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. Ms. Vios?
So I had also a couple of questions. I'm trying to, again, kind of like wrap around everything that's been talked and said, cause there's, there's some confusion even for myself to kind of follow along. So the first question that I have is on individual tracing approach, the number one, the, the one that, I guess this is the one that we're currently doing. Students go home if they've been exposed. Unless they are vaccinated or they had had COVID in the past ninety days, correct?
So in the current model, if someone does not qualify for modified quarantine, they must remain home and test on day five. And if they're negative on that test for day five, then they may return to school on day six. And just as a reminder, modified quarantine is when both the COVID-positive individual and the student were both wearing a mask. Then the exposed student can remain in school and they are tested at the time of exposure and on day five. And they may resume extracurricular activities on day six. If they decline testing, then they remain home for ten days and return to school on day eleven. So currently for unvaccinated students, they need to remain home to quarantine with the current model we're using. And they would not qualify for modified quarantine. So the group tracing approach doesn't factor in vaccination status or how consistently the masks were being worn. So it, it takes some of that out of it.
No, I, I did see that in the, in the group testing and in the hybrid tracing approach. I guess just currently, cause I'm trying to also compare kind of what Mr. Tillman was saying earlier, compare current approach to what is being recommended. I see that current approach is individual tracing and what's being recommended is hybrid testing. So I just wanna make sure that I understand completely what current, the current approach is. And on here, it says, it says that you can test after exposure, five days after, right? If you test five days after, then, and you test negative and you're not showing symptoms, that you can come back to school on day six and resume, you know, extracurriculars. However, it's a little confusing because on the activity section, it says in-person instruction only. So what does that mean? In-person instruction only if they, if they like, and then it says no extracurriculars if negative test on or after day five. So that's kind of saying that there is going to be allowance for in-person instruction even before. I just want some clarity there, I guess. Am I reading that wrong?
No, that's correct. So under modified quarantine, a student may continue in-person instruction, but they cannot engage in extracurricular activities until after that test on day five. And if negative, they can resume extracurriculars on day six.
So, so remind, I'm sorry, remind me again what modified quarantine means?
So yes, again, modified quarantine depends on the exposure scenario. So for instance, if both a COVID-positive individual and the student in question within the six-foot radius were both wearing a mask, then the exposed student can remain in school under modified quarantine. So that they're tested and they're tested at the time of exposure and again on day five. And they can remain in school during that period of time so long as they remain asymptomatic. And then on day five, when they test, if that test is negative, they can also resume extracurricular activities on day six.
Okay, I got it. I got it. And yeah, that sounds a little problematic because, I mean, why are we excluding them from extracurriculars but still allowing them to come to instructions? In-person instruction, there, it just, it just seems a little more like extra. And, and I can see why it's confusing. I also can see how hybrid tracing seems to be, you know, kind of a a better approach because it does take into consideration kind of like both, right? So you can do individual tracing if you consider it necessary or group, uh, group testing. The only concern that I do have with what I've been hearing from parents and community members is that the district was moving apparently in the direction of of enrolling everyone for testing unless parent opted out. That is, that is a concern. You know, me personally, that I also have and also what I've heard because you do want to get, and I, and I know that this is because the district, because this makes it easier for the district to kind of handle the, the approach on, you know, managing the situation of COVID. I, I get that. But I think it's really important for us not to bypass that step of really taking and allowing parents to consent, you know, if they wanna have their child tested at school or not. Or if they just wanna choose to, to take the student home. I think that's very important and we should not forget that or, or move into that direction. I also want to clarify, and I think the question has been asked, we have not been testing without parent consent. We were going to move in the direction of putting everybody on consent unless parent explicitly stated, no, I don't want it, which we've passed. We didn't, never implemented and it looks like we're not going to implement it. So I just wanna make that clear, that that has not been the case. And, and I'll use also an example, not so long ago, my son, so Mr. Tillman had asked, how do we go about getting that consent? The school nurse did call me and she asked for my verbal consent to be test, you know, to test my son and I said, sure. Then she said, okay, I'm gonna send you a text message and it's gonna go into a link and all you have to do is sign, you know, with the finger. And I did. It was very easy. But I have a smartphone and I use technology, so I do also understand that that is not everybody's case. It worked for me. It was fine. So I think those are all the questions that I have at this point. Thank you. So um, I think those are all the questions that I have at this point. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seviles, Dr. Rogers.
Thank you. Um, and most of my questions have been answered because we are all sharing the same concern. And I think the biggest thing um again is to, to make sure it's known that if consent wasn't given, then we didn't move forward with that. And I think I'm hearing, I'm not hearing anything contrary to say they, that that did happen. However, if it has happened, um again, we want our parents to let us know that, you know? Cause we don't, we, we take no pleasure in, in saying it is out there and it isn't out there. We want them to voice that to us because that is how we will know. And, and, and on behalf of your student, because your student is enrolled here in the district. And so when we know who it is or, or where it's happening, we can isolate the situation and take care, care of it. So I, I'm, again, what I'm saying publicly, if it is, please, please let us know. Um, we want to know, um, you know, if that violation is taking place. And then secondly, um, to the hybrid model, because it looks like that is the recommendation as of right now. But I also heard what Mr. Vatira said about, you know, having the options to, they kind of put it in our lap, right? And I am hoping that we're also looking around and, and, and I can say, I've heard other districts say, we, they don't have COVID liaisons. They don't have all of these things. They're trying to do it themselves. They are on top of everything we know that's difficult. There are districts are not even here. So that, that is also an unfortunate situation. But in our case, if we can glean information from others that we have, that makes sense. Because it is, as someone said, it is a nightmare just listening to it, how it's taking place. It is a nightmare because there's no roadmap for it. COVID didn't leave us the book, it just landed on us. And so I would encourage, if there's other options, and even us as a board, to weigh in with, with, you know, other options, right? Cause we can pick it apart and pick it apart, but I like to hear suggestions too, you know? What do we think, and definitely from our, our parents and everybody in the entire district. If there's something different and we know that some of even our teachers have, students in other districts, bring that information so that we can weigh in, but it looks like you've landed on something that give us a couple of options. Including, I'm trying to wrap my mind about the difference of your elementary, your middle and your high school. I'm sure it's some differences there. But like you said, Dr. Rodriguez, it's not a one, you know, size fit all. And we know we can't do that, but we also need to find out, are the needs differently? You know, how is it? And definitely as it been said, you know, to the comment that was made earlier, a reference to our students with disabilities. We just can't leave them out either. And so I'm, I'm, I think I heard um Mr. Vatira say that they're looking at something um coming to us. Um, but within our guidelines, if we're not stepping outside of something, that's something we make sure that we're on top of right now. Because that's a whole nother population that had COVID or Omicron, all of it happened to them as well. And I would hate to hear that, okay, we're leaving our students out because they aren't able to do that. And I totally agree, you know, you can have a kindergarten that might not be able to do it either. But we do, we have also supported our nurses. And so where that lies within reason, um, of them and their work and their lift or hiring, as we said, if we need to hire more. We have to do what we need to do because we're in a troubling time right now. And we don't want to, you know, uh, pick apart the messenger, but we want to see how we can support what's there. But from what I'm hearing, the hybrid is just giving us some framework of some options versus this is how you gotta do it. Send your kids home because we want them to be in class also. You know, that's the big thing, sending home ten days, and they went to five days, you know, and so on and so forth. But that's a lot of time away from instruction and it's just, it's just difficult. So all of those things, you know, hopefully, you know, if there's some additional things, we want to hear about it. Um, and you know, it sounds like we're, we're hearing the hybrid, um, you know, as a tracing approach. But I also want to hear other things as well. Those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Daddy Rogers. Um, Mr. Tillman?
Yes, um, first just for, to me, credibility is everything. So I did get a call from a parent today that told me that their child was tested at uh Ramon Alasanda, I think it was a, a second grader. But I'm hearing you tell me, uh, Dr. Rodriguez, that when, when they say a, a student was tested, that means that the student tested themselves? So there, there's no one doing the test? Okay.
Correct.
So the, the parent had a concern because he said in the past, she was able to go to the school and be there when the child did the test.
So it could continue to happen.
This was different for her. And then she did say that when she questioned the person that did it, one of the liaisons, they, they thought it was confusing because they had a conversation about maybe testing because it was the five days after. But then this, this person mentioned the group testing. And then she says, she told him, I thought the group testing wasn't happening. And then he said, well, maybe it's not happening, but it's going to happen. And then she questioned him, well, you mean it's going to happen if the board approves it? So they had that long discussion. So there are people out there, the, the challenge for us is, even when you guys put something out to stop, how does it get to the actual people doing the work to make it stop? And that's where we lose credibility a lot of time because people are running with it already, right? So I, I, it's, it's, it's good to know that when you say the person got tested, that the student self tested themselves. But the parents still had a concern with that because they didn't get to say, yes, I want to do it. But, but I really think um as a district, we're, we're, we're hurting ourselves. This district has spent millions of dollars to pay for these liaisons that other districts don't have. The uh, they say that the, the change was because of some guidance, but at the same time, they're saying that they couldn't continue what they were doing before. So it sounded like to me they could have continued, it's just that it was a lot of work. But uh, but I think in the end, we can have a win-win. And the win-win is this, we can still notify the parents like we've always done. You can allow the people who uh want to allow, to, to sign off on their children to get tested. You allow them to opt in, but there's no consequences for the parents that don't. It should be just like it is right now. And then I think you should allow the option of having tests go home with the kids, because you know who they are. Allow for parents to schedule a time to come in and take the test. And also allow the parents to take the test someplace else, either with the uh, one of the county sites or one of the district sites that we do. Or even, you know, you can go online and get a couple of tests from uh President Biden. He's giving out these tests. So there's other ways of getting tests without saying you have to have us do the test.
Absolutely, yes. We're not the only ones that can, that can give the test. We hopefully aren't, we don't want to be the only ones giving the test.
So that should be the change. So the change would be, we're not gonna force you to allow us to do group testing. We'll do group notification, but there's multiple ways you can do tests. And if you don't have a negative test by a certain day, then the recommendation is that you, whatever it is, self-isolated, whatever it is. So which is very similar to what we're doing right now. But I think you just take advantage of notifying everybody in that class. That's the new thing, instead of trying to just do a, a group. But then give them options of testing. But I gotta say, when we leave here tonight, that the message is, and the reality is, we're not going to uh test people, test students without parental consent and only if the, the, the people opt in. And, and we heard from the parents of the night, we know we can't just depend on parent square. So you guys have to find other options of communicating that, okay, here's a student that test, you were in a class that tested positive. And here's your options for doing the test and report back um to us and that should suffice for it. But I, but I really think we need to use our resources in a smarter way because we're way ahead of other districts. But we don't want to do things to parents where we tell them, they're gonna be forced to allow us to administer a test that they don't want.
Absolutely. We just, and we also need to give more time.
Thank you, yeah, you're right. I looked at the LA Unified thing, they're not doing anything until spring, whatever. Thank you. Next is Dr., Dr. White.
Well, thank you to my colleagues for asking pretty much every question I could even possibly think of. But uh, the one I, I wasn't sure of, maybe this was presented and I apologize if it was because it's been a lot of information, you know, going between us right now. But um, you know, I, I heard some concerns about self-swabbing, you know, our students with disabilities as well, um, in regards to testing. Do we utilize the saliva test?
We've been utilizing the saliva, saliva test for adults. We have not been using them for students.
Is there a reason why we don't use them for students?
I'd have to defer to Jade on that one.
Okay, that's a pretty simple process. Obviously, it's not swabbing, you're not putting anything in their noses, nostrils, excuse me. Um, so I mean, I think that's a test we probably should look into using with our younger children and definitely with our students with disabilities. So I think we should have every possible option for testing if folks choose to test. And that's just another one to use, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Tillman, you asked two or three of my questions and, and comments, so I agree with you. And the one major one was also allowing parents to do their own testing, their own home testing uh in lieu of having somebody at the, at the school do it. I think that would, because I have a granddaughter, she was really, I had to take her to get tested, I mean, and she was scared. It took a long time for us to convince her and she's seven, you know? So it was really, so I understand, I understand uh the concern. And then uh the logistics, like Dr. Rogers said, it, it's like a nightmare. I mean, I, I don't know how we're gonna keep track of all the logistics. I mean, I, 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 it's like, probably keeps you up at night. But anyway, um, the logistics. Uh, also messaging. We have to be more, how would you say, clear in our messaging and the ways that we send messages. Cause I get, I get messages and calls from parents and they're all confused. They're, well, what does that mean? What, how do we do, I mean, why, uh, you know, they're just confused. They weren't saying that some of their kids were tested without their permission. And I don't know if that's true or not. And they don't want to tell me the school, they, I mean, they don't want to get anybody in trouble. Uh, anyway, so they're, they're concerned and I, I hear their concerns. Uh, so messaging, you know, the multiple ways that we need to message and be very clear on exactly all the components of what's going on. And lastly, just a basic question, do we have enough tests?
We've ordered, we've, we've ordered additional tests. So we have, uh, within the last week, we ordered fifty thousand additional tests. Uh, we are expecting a shipment of um tests soon. So yes, we've ordered.
Frankly, I don't think fifty thousand is enough if we have forty-six thousand kids. I mean, uh, I, that's just a basic question I'm asking. Because um, if we're gonna do all this testing, that's not enough. So uh, those are my comments and I, I just think we need to be more clear about every aspect of it. And listen to our parents and all their questions and, and take them to heart. And, and as a board, we have to uh, you know, uh, make sure that our parents feel safe and that they, they, they understand what's going on. And, and, and the, I mean, we, we just have to. And, but, you know, and I know that we have the best of everything surround, I mean, we actually have a whole system that we can uh go to and that's a good thing. So let's just use it more wisely. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, Ms. Seviles.
Sorry, I had a, a couple of questions that I had forgotten. But um really quickly, the hybrid um tracing approach, how, uh, the quarantine time is ten days if um parents decide not to test. So that wouldn't change from the current individual tracing approach? Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so, so based on um, I guess that question, I just, I just kind of want to um put it out there that there's definitely obviously competing, competing um concerns and competing interests out in the community. There's some uh parents, um, and I don't want to speak for them, but as far as what I heard and understood and have been hearing over the last couple of board meetings is that are, there are some parents that just don't want to test, period. Whether it's in school or whether it's out of school or whether it's with a private physician or whatever the case may be. They, they may not want to um, uh, you know, subject their, their kids to that. Um, and that's, you know, that's within their choice. Um, and I think that their concern, if, if, if I can, you know, if I remember correctly or if I'm interpreting it correctly, I think that their concern was that um they're gonna be out of school for the ten days. So that's still the case in either model. And I do want to say that and make that clear, um, so that there is no confusion around that. Um, the next, the next, um, the next thing that I also want to kind of emphasize so that we are prepared, um, you know, as a board as well, along the same lines of competing, you know, concerns or competing interests. If we are to do the hybrid model, we have to keep in, we have to really keep in mind, this means that we're gonna be sending letters to more people out in the community, right? So to whole classes rather than a couple of students. Which, which means that there's more um space for misinterpretation um about whether, does this mean that there's, it's a new case or, you know? A- and then we go back to, well, is the dashboard updated? Because now we're getting this letter and this letter's being sent to this school and this letter's being sent to this school. So it kind of gives the illusion of like, there's a whole lot happening. But then we have to make the distinction because then we're gonna have another group of, of, you know, um, concerned parents coming and saying, hey, we're receiving all of these letters and what's happening with the dashboard. So I just want to make sure that we keep that in mind because that doesn't mean necessarily that these students, when these letters go out, that they've tested positive. And I just want to make sure that we're ahead of the game on that because those are going to be concerns uh that come in. And if, I don't know if you guys have thought through that um and have any ideas on how you're gonna go about, you know, making sure that that gets communicated to the community clearly as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seviles, Dr. Daddy Rogers.
I, I'm sorry, there was one additional concern of clarity. And I do agree, we definitely need, I mean, the messaging and the clarity and the communication is important. But I also wanted to, because a question was raised on how we are, and I want to make it clear on how the board is following guidelines on things such as this. Um, are we still at, um, you know, the, I heard uh Mr. Vatira talk about the public health. And so we need to understand or, or give direction or clarify so that we are all on the same page. For quite some time now, since at the onset of COVID, you know, we were looking for guidelines every, that changed every day on the hour. But um, so just clarity around, even in this case, you know, we can see what the public health um made a recommendation for. And so do we want to, um, when we receive that information, do we want to have a special board meeting? What do, what do we want to do in order to make sure that we are clear also in the messaging on this? Because there, you know, there are great concerns, you know, and a lot is going on. And some of us do work full-time jobs or you're going to school or you're doing something. And so when those guidelines are changing, we do get information, but we gotta disseminate and read it. You know, and sometimes the district is in a place that they need to make a decision. So we need clarity on that.
Thank you, Dr. Daddy Rogers, Dr. Flores.
I'm sorry, I just have one last question. Um, in thinking about the kids getting tested in our schools, there are privacy um laws. Uh, and I want to know if we're following HIPAA uh in terms of protecting um the um results of our kids. I, I know that when I have gone to be tested, uh, or my grandchild, uh, that, you know, there, there are, I'm told that it's private. I mean, my information will be private and not shared. So that's a concern I have, a big concern. I don't know if anybody can answer that.
Yeah, student information is not, it's not open for everyone. Um, information that we have within the team is not disseminated. It's really in a select group of people and it's a need-to-know basis. So we don't have student numbers, we don't have names floating out there of who tested positive or how many times a student was tested. We do keep track of that, but that is not information that is given to everybody or anybody. Um, it, it's a select few and that's only to, so that we can manage the situation.
So we are following HIPAA uh guidelines, federal guidelines?
We follow FERPA because we're a school district. HIPAA is more under the umbrella for medical facilities. But yes, we are protecting in the confidentiality of student information.
Thank you.
All righty, board, that was a very, very thorough conversation. And I'm quite sure Executive Cabinet and Dr. Rodriguez and her team have heard us loud and clear as well as the public as well, and their concerns that they've had. I don't think we have to repeat those anymore, but moving forward, I think you have a solid plan. And hopefully that is well communicated with our families and parents in multiple methods of communication, old school, new school, however we have to do it, but they need to know. All righty, thank you to you and your team. We will move on to 7.2 Administrative Report, Governor's January Update, State Budget Proposal. I imagine that's Mr. Solins.
Absolutely, Dr. Wyatt. Good evening, Dr. Wyatt, Board Vice President, Mr. Tillman, members of the board and cabinet. This evening, we will be providing a overview of the governor's state budget proposal for the 2022-23 fiscal year. So during this presentation, we are going to review our economic outlook and provide some additional details related to the outlook that the governor's budget proposal was based off of. We're also gonna discuss the key education investment and themes communicated through the governor in his budget proposal. And then we're gonna discuss the what's ahead and the next steps. So we can see by this slide that the governor's budget proposal, which was announced on January 10th, is really the beginning of the budget process for the state. Once the governor announces his budget and his proposal, bills are introduced to provide additional clarification and well as a review of the governor's budget proposal by the Legislative Analyst Office for use by the Assembly and State Senate to formulate their amendments and recommendations to the budget language. And as we move forward, the governor, as we receive new information related to income tax and additional revenues, the governor will come back and propose a May revision that will update his budget proposal to, to reflect the current economic realities as we move closer to the start of the new fiscal year. And then, following that process, the governor and the legislature continue to communicate, negotiate to reach a budget deal that the legislature adopts and the governor signs by June 30th of 2000, or, of 2022 for this year. So in the governor's budget proposal, what he projects to happen is that state revenues continue to outpace projections in the 2020-21 budget. That is primarily due to increase in sales tax and increase into personal income tax, which is largely driven by the stock market and the gains that we've seen over the past several years. It's important to remember that in California, two-thirds of our, the state revenues come from personal income tax. And of that two-thirds of revenue, the top 1% earners in the state account for over 50% of those revenues. So that creates volatility when we think about state funding. If the stock market were to take a dip, we would fill it in, in terms of the revenues that we receive from those top 1% earners. As part of the budget proposal, they are projecting a general fund surplus of $45.7 billion. Of that $16.1 billion is slated for education in that proposal. The governor also, in his proposal, is always, is also taking a very conservative approach to budgeting. He is projecting lower revenue projections than was projected in November by the Legislative Analyst Office. It is his commitment to maintain ongoing budget stability, especially as we look at the uncertainty as we continue to address the unpredictability of the COVID-19 pandemic, as well as the recognition of the inflation and the impacts on the economy as we move forward, particularly the stock market and its impacts on personal income tax. So this slide shows you a comparison between what the Legislative Analyst, Legislative Analyst Office projected in November in terms of Prop 98 Minimum Funding Guarantee and what the governor projected in his, in his budget proposal. So we can see on the orange bars, which are the governor's budget proposals, he is projecting lower Proposition 98 Minimum Guarantee. And again, that is attributed to the governor taking a more conservative approach to projecting revenues, primarily corporate taxes, as he, he anticipates that California will see some large corporations leave the state for other states. So as we look a little deeper at the Prop 98 investments that the governor is projecting, we can see that for K-12, the majority of the proposals are falling in categorical funding or those restricted funding uses, making room for a lot of additional revenues to support the initiatives that he'd launched in the 2021-22 budget year, which include the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program and investments in early education, including universal TK. So now, as we look at the Proposition 98 Guarantee proposed by the governor, at $102 billion, which is an all-time high for education funding. And if we look back to just 2011, 12, just about 11 years ago, where we were just being funded at $47.3 billion, we can see that significant investments, starting with Governor Brown and continued through Governor, Governor Newsom have been made. As part of that increase of $8.2 billion from prior year in Prop 98 Guarantee, an investment to increase the cost of living adjustment in recognition of the high inflation of 5.33%, which is up from the 2.48% COLA that was previously, previously projected. So when we combine this with the proposed change to ADA and the soft landing of the three-year averaging for ADA to help alleviate that cliff effect that we were projecting for several years to, to occur in 22-23, we estimate that SBCUSD would generate $21.1 million increase over what we have as a first interim budget, just based on those changes proposed by the governor. And then, again, taking that more conservative approach, the governor is also making considerable investments to the budget stabilization or rainy day account and the public school stabilization accounts as he prepares for what he anticipates will be an, a, an economic downturn, downturn somewhere down the road. And so as we move away from the ongoing conversations with the cost of living adjustment, we look at the additional investments that the governor was making. Remember, this budget year, the governor continued to make investments for school transformation, which include universal pre-K and TK programs, the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, the universal grant, Universal Meals Initiative. He's also added college and career pathways, early literacy investments, as well as some additional funds for teacher workforce. So this is what those fundings or those investments look like for, you know, look like in terms of that investment, whether that is an ongoing or one-time impact. And we can see in terms of impact, there are a number of one-time investments that are being made. But moreover, we see that most of the additional investments outside of the cost of living adjustment and the ADA flexibility, most of those investments are restricted in nature, meaning we have to do something in order to spend those dollars. We cannot just use them for discretionary purposes. So we can see the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program is a big initiative with the governor as he, as he wishes that schools across the state will continue to address the learning loss mitigation that's occurred during this pandemic. So he's accelerating that investment by $3.4 billion, making the total investment over this year and next year anticipated to be $4.4 billion. Again, additional funding to support the universal TK initiative, as well as investments for inclusive practices for state preschool of just over $809 million. And an increase in the AB 602 base special education funding of $500 million. Additionally, some new investments that we see the governor's made is additional investments of $700 million for early literacy, which include multilingual school libraries or classroom libraries, as well as investments to train and hire literally, literacy specialists. And then in addition, there's college and career pathways, as well as dual enrollment investments totaling $2 billion. And then in recognition that the state has not passed a facilities bond in several years since 2016, he is looking to shore up the shortfall of state facilities funding by providing additional $2.23 billion to fund those currently received but unfunded facility applications. So what's not in the budget? So the governor has not addressed pension cost relief. This was the last year where the district received any pension cost relief in terms of investments that bought down our contribution rate. Additionally, as we saw last year, the, the governor provided a COLA augmentation to recognize the increased cost of doing business. That hasn't been represented at this point. As well as no additional increases to the LCFF formula. Recall that we, we had an increase to concentration grants last year of 15%. There is no increase currently proposed for either the supplemental concentration grants or the base grants. So it's important to remember that, again, the governor's budget proposal is a starting point. There is a lot of time between now and when the budget is adopted for the governor to receive new information, update his proposals, as well as to negotiate with the legislature. So this is just an overview of the budget and LCAP next steps from the governor's budget proposal, including plans that we have to adopt and bring before the board for adoption, which includes the LCAP supplement in February, the A-through-G Improvement Grant, Improvement Grant Plan in April. And as we move forward, we continue to hold our stakeholder events for receiving LCAP. Input on our LCAP as we develop that alongside our budget going into June. And with that, I will take any questions.
All right, Mr. Solins, thank you very much. We'll start with Mr. Tillman and Dr. Flores.
Mr. Solins, two questions. The first one on this page four, where you have the projected general fund surplus is $45.7 billion. And then you say that to the, to the schools, it's gonna be $16.1 billion? When I do my factor like .005, it comes back like at $100 million. I know you said we're gonna get $20 million. Are the, where are the other areas where the additional money gonna come in at?
I'm sorry.
Where would the additional money, I mean, it may be restricted money, but what, what other money are we gonna get, other than the $20 million?
So the, the additional money are on that slide, I'll go back to it. So this is, this slide, so we are going to get these additional education investments. Right now, all of these are, are awaiting trailer bill language to find out what the details are in terms of the methodology for funding. So we don't have exact numbers on what that would mean to our district. But these are addition to that 21-point, 20.1 million that we spoke about.
So at some point, can you provide the, the board with the amounts that may be associated with our district?
Absolutely. As soon as we get clarification on the trailer bill language, we can provide, provide some estimates to the board. And then it's also important to note that these investments can change. You know, we saw last year, the governor and the legislature really haggled on several issues.
Exactly.
And so this can, this will change.
This is the governor's wants, but then the legislature has there and they have to balance it out?
Correct.
I got it. And then one last thing, I, I did read where they said that for the SIR3 money, that they changed the guidelines and some of that money can be used for paying salaries now? How would that impact us?
So, so part of the, part of the language that's come out from actual Education Secretary Cardona's office, they recognize the challenges that districts are having with staffing shortages. And so for that, they are advising that districts can utilize funding to support compensation. As part of that, it, they are still federal funds. So along with that, there are some strings attached in terms of time reporting that we have to provide. So the answer is yes. And so when the opportunity comes, we've provided the board with the SIR3 plan. If there was an opportunity to pivot or change because of emerging needs, then that would be the opportunity.
That's exactly my point. If there's a way we can benefit from it and, and to help offset some of the costs from compensation, then I think that's be a priority of ours. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I, I was just gonna add to, sorry. Just, just recalling that these are one-time dollars. So, you know, we are always advised to stay away from ongoing commitments with those ongoing, one-time dollars.
All right, Dr. Flores.
Solins, going back to page nine or slide nine. Is the community schools' budget already approved, the $2 billion? Or is that still?
So the $3 billion was actually approved in this current year budget. However, the, the actual dynamics, the application for that has not been released yet. So those funds.
It's not part of it?
No, this is actually 22-23 budget. So the community schools was part of the, this current year budget.
And so it's still there and, and they haven't decided how it's gonna be allocated?
Correct. We would have to apply for those funds.
Okay, so that would be additional money?
Yes, if we allocate, if we.
And do you know the status of Portentino's bill? I haven't heard anything in terms of pivoting from ADA exclusively to enrollment?
We haven't received.
In terms of budgeting?
Yeah, we, we haven't received any updates. We know that with the governor's proposal to do the three-year ADA averaging, there are other legislators' proposals for similar, but the function or the methodology of how that would be accomplished would be different. So we, we know that the ADA averaging piece will be present in the final budget. We're pretty confident of that, what it will look like. So to your question, the Portentino bill, we, we don't know how those additional bills will impact its passage. It's important to remember or to note that the Portentino legislation would not take effect for districts until 23-24, so not next year.
So the averaging, the averaging of three years for the next ADA allocation, what bill is that, is AB 170?
So there's, there's a, there's a couple. So it's proposed in the governor's budget. And then there are two other budget bills. I don't have their numbers, but two other legislatures.
So that'll help us a lot because of declining enrollment?
That, that will help. It, it will be better than the alternative, which is that cliff. But it's important to remember when we, when we think about the three-year averaging, district attend, or student attendance is being decimated this year in all districts. You know, for a number of reasons. So we are seeing attendance rates at historically low levels. When you think about that averaging, at, at, at some point, that those low attendance rates are going to come into that average and they are going to affect it. So, so the nice thing is it's a soft landing. It gradually gets us there rather than one steep decrease. So we're appreciative of that, but there are some, some challenges with, with those models as well.
Given our COVID surge, I mean, our ADA is, is really negatively impacted. And then doing the testing, the group testing and all that, I mean, that's really cutting into, I mean, not just the, not just the kids' attendance, but just their, you know, in-person instruction and being in school. I mean, that's, I mean, it's like very devastating.
And I, and I would add, I would add that the, the way that independent study was structured has created barriers as well. And so part of the challenges we receive with attendance accounting are largely due to our independent study because if students don't turn in work samples, then we cannot provide ADA crediting for it. So there's a, there's a, I know the governor and legislature are acutely aware of the issues and we're hopeful that they will have some, some positive solutions.
Thank you.
Dr. Daddy Rogers?
Just a quick question, Mr. Solins and, or whoever can answer. But on the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program on page nine, what are some of those, what are example of, of some of the programs that they're looking for in that category?
So I'll answer that question. So some of the things that we're looking at is partnering with our after-school providers so that we can extend the day. so that we can extend the day to nine hours. So part of the, the requisites are that we're running 30 days outside of the regular school year. So these are 30 additional days at nine hours each. So there will be a common, we have to offer it. So that doesn't mean that students have to stay in the program for nine hours. So what we will be doing is providing academic component, working with our teachers, providing like a summer school program, like a summer bridge, as well as programming during intercession. And then working with our providers, the ones that we have now, so that they can extend the day. So it'll look more like CAPS. There are going to be some opportunities for additional programming, like our football camps that we have in the summertime, some field trips that we were looking into, and just trying to be more creative so that it's, it's fun learning, that it's not just, you know, what they've normally seen. So we are looking at that and, and looking and planning for what that looks like. But definitely we will be having our CAPS providers that we have now that will be working with us to provide that extended time.
This will be more or less supplemental education that's being, you know, lost in the classroom as well, right? And the fun, I'm all for it. I know they need that. That's the social emotional learning side. But just, just trying to make sure I hear what we're going to do specifically for those, and we hate to call them gaps, you know, but, you know, what's taking place, there's got to be something addition to, especially when we get money designated. So thank you.
And we're also working with Ed Services as they're coordinating, you know, the, the academic component. And so then our Swiss department is also partnering so that we have the SEL component. But as, as we're looking at expanded learning, these nine-hour periods of time, we're trying to encompass where it's well-rounded, academic, but also fun because we don't want to burn out our, our students because they're getting tired of school too.
And I would just point out the 937 million, that is a new augmentation to the expanded learning. And that is to provide additional music arts enrichments as part of those programs. So that's an additional set aside for that.
All righty, was that it for questions? Okay, Mr. Solon, thank you again. Great report. Appreciate it. Moving on now to 7.3. And thank you so much to our folks who've been patient with us, Mr. Mobley from the county. And I think, Mr. Devon, you coming up too? All right. And then, so thank you again for being patient and staying here with us in the early hours of the evening.
No problem. Thank you very much. My name is Dennis Mobley and I work for the County Superintendent of Schools as a governance consultant. And I've been asked to help assist the, the board with facilitating a, your appointment process. There are some slides. We can go ahead and go to the first one. But let me just begin by saying that I commend the board for last, last week where you decided to move to an appointment process. I think that is a wise course of action. I have been through this process before with the County Board of Education and also other local agents, education agencies. In fact, this past August, we had a board member step down, Mr. Hardy Brown, who represented this area. And I was very impressed with the quality of the candidates that came before the county board. And your task, you, you lost a great treasure in Dr. Margaret Hill. I, I knew her. I knew that she was a tremendous resource to this board, to this community, to the county and to the region. So your, your task is not to replace Margaret Hill, but you do need to fill a vacant seat on your board. And in facilitating, one of the things I was asked to do is to help keep the board on task, make sure that you have an efficient process, but also a process that is respectful. And so if there's no objections from members of the board, that will be the, the direction that I will take as I, I work with, with the board. So you have before you, there are a couple of points. This is just kind of a introduction to the slides that will follow. And I do want to thank SBCS. I've got to get, I'm, I'm more used to saying SBCSS, so forgive me if I slip up. I want to thank your district staff for assembling the slides for you this evening. So we're going to take a quick review of the legal requirements for the provisional appointment process, discuss the proposed process for the board to interview eligible candidates, and to develop and assign interview questions to facilitate the interview process. So with that, let's just take a quick look at the timeline. You're already into that. You have taken action to move this to an appointment process. Those applications did go out the very next day on January 26th. Today is February 1st, where we will be discussing interview process and finalize interview questions. The applications actually close tomorrow. And I understand you already have a, a large number of applications. I'm not screening or looking at any of those, but I understand you from your superintendent that you do have several applications already in play. The applications do close tomorrow, so people can still submit. There, I know on your district website, you do have a, a application that you can download and then that needs to come directly to the district office. Next, a week from today, on the 8th, is when we have the schedule for the special board meeting to interview, to do interviews with the candidates and select an appointee. And then the other dates are the first meeting, February 15th would be the swearing in. But the statutory requirement to fill, do all this work is by February 17th. Next slide. So for candidate eligibility, must be over 18, must be a citizen of the state of California, resident of the school district, must not be prohibited for any constitutional reasons. Obviously needs to be a registered voter and must not be an employee. And so there's really no additional screening process that would occur. We're not looking at letters after a person's name as a qualification. And so these are the requirements. And staff will review the applications, will check with the registrar voters to make sure that these individuals are qualified and eligible. And those would be the group that would come to this body. And these are the, the areas where there would be any type of screening. So next slide gives you kind of a five-point outline, how the, the process will work. This really describes the process for the, the candidates. When they arrive on the 8th, meeting, time would be set for them to arrive early before the board meeting for an orientation, just to go over how the process will work, answer any questions. They would be sequestered and then the board would have the interview of the candidates. There'd be board deliberation and the interviews and deliberation, all of that is an open session. And then the board will go through a voting process to make an appointment. Next slide. So the candidates will review the appointment timeline and term. The term actually would be for the remainder, well, until the November election. Actually, let me clarify that. The term is, goes into early December. The term would expire with an appointment, would expire the second Friday in December. I know that Dr. Hill's term was until 2024, but there would be a short-term election in, in November. This would be for the, the appointee. And it would also be open to other people to run at that time. The candidates can also learn about the interview process, give, and will be given the list of questions. That is one of the tasks here tonight. The board will decide what questions. This is a public meeting, so those questions will be known. But when candidates arrive, they will be given the questions in advance of the meeting so that they, they can respond to those. And that will also help facilitate the process to move it more quickly. When the candidates meet prior to the board meeting, we will have a, draw lots to determine the order of the interviews. And they will be escorted in based on that process. And the, the candidates will also, during the orientation time, can ask any questions to clarify the process. Next slide. So the candidates will be in the superintendent's office. They'll be there with district staff. They'll be, again, escorted at the time for the interview. And they, after the candidate has participated in the interview, then they can remain in the room for the rest of the, for the other interviews that would follow. So for the next slide, we have the, had a discussion with the superintendent, the board president and staff. We feel that with a large number of candidates, that we should really look at a process that would be held to about 15 minutes. And to, to make this work the smoothest, would first give the opportunity for each candidate to do an opening statement. They can say, could be open-ended, whatever they wish to provide. And then we have six board members seated at the dais. The thought is that each board member could ask one question. Later on, we have a, a sample group of questions that they can choose from. But you need to make that decision tonight, which questions you would ask. And then the board will go through its questions. Really need to keep this, and this is where the facilitator, taskmaster, with respect, would need to keep you to a timeline. And part of that is that you do not ask clarifying or additional questions. And there's a couple of reasons for this. One is the time period is very short. Secondly, if you get into follow-up questions with board members, then it's not really fair to the other candidates. And one of the things, by keeping it to, say, a 15-minute time period, is that if a particular candidate wishes to elaborate and spend five or six minutes on a question that would have less time to, to answer the remaining questions. They're provided the questions in advance, so they may want to say, well, I want to spend more time on question three. I can get through questions one and two more quickly. The board members would still ask the question, but I think this works for a process that is fair, respectful. But to be honest, the board's going to need to be disciplined in this regard. And that's where the facilitator, taskmaster role that I would take with respect. And then after that, then the candidate would sit down and then the board would go on to the next candidate. So by law, the deliberation must be, we go to the next slide. Must, all of this must be in open session. So there are no secret ballots. You have to do all of this. I know in a many person, many of you are involved in situations where you would interview individuals for a particular job. And, and so you might think of this as closed session. You had closed session earlier this evening, considering some administrative appointments. But because this is a board seat, everything is, is in public. And so we'll get through, get to how that process might work in just a moment. Again, the interview process, we've, we've talked about some of these things. But after all of the candidates and the board can reflect and the, can determine how they wish to respond. My experience is that the boards will often feel the need, and rightly so, to comment on the overall caliber of many of the, the board candidates or applicants for the vacancy. But each board member will then have the opportunity to reflect and maybe say, I like, this individual is a first choice. This individual is a second choice, so that can be noted by staff. And then as other board members speak, they may have other names they wish to suggest. Or they may agree that this is the cream that has gone to the top. And very often that will help speed the process in your deliberation. And at some point, then the board would make a motion, a member of the board would make a motion, there would be second if there's a candidate. And if you have, you need four votes to take action on this board. And if that occurs, then that member would be selected. Now, it may take more than one round of voting to do this. Going back to the recent experience that I had with the county board, they had multiple rounds. The first time each of the four, well, it's a five-member board with one vacancy, there were four members. So each one had a different choice. And then eventually it came down to, to the members said, one individual, you still had holdouts for one, one person and another person wanted us, so they went back and forth. They finally got to a point where they did get three votes. Again, it's a five-member board and that was the action that occurred to make that appointment. And in doing so, again, anticipating a large number of applicants, then there'll be some who don't really have done as well or haven't been suggested on the board. So they would, could be not considered for, for a motion. Again, I would just point out that secret ballots are not allowed. And so again, just to go to the next slide, the Robert's Rules of Order would apply. Any board member can make the motion. Four years, well, it's actually four yays to make the appointment. And again, we can have multiple vote, votes to accomplish that process. So with that, I think the next two slides really kind of go together. We have 12 questions. I believe this power, this presentation has been given to you in advance. I don't know that we need to read all of the questions. But at this point, if the board would like to focus in, and, and I don't know, I'll defer to the president, how you would like to proceed with this. But if a board member says, you know, I really like question X, may I ask that? And then if the others agree, that's, that's fine. We just need to come up with one question for each board member. So with that, Mr. President, I see there are a few lights on. I don't know if there's some questions we can answer at this time or how you wish to proceed.
Yeah, thank you again, Mr. Mobley, for coming down and, you know, with us tonight. And we do have some questions and we'll, for you, and then we'll look at the questions. So we'll start with Mr. Tillman, it looks like Dr. Flores after.
Mr. Mobley, on this page where it says interview and appointment process, you, you mentioned that it's going to be a short-term election. You kind of confused me there. I'm, I'm assuming that if we appoint someone, then they'll run in the regular November election at the same time we run, right?
That's correct. You have your normal election for some of your seated board members now. The appointment would be until that election. Even though Member Hill's term was to have gone to 2024, you can only go to the, the November election and then there would be a two, two-year term to get it back on the sequence of four years beginning in 2024. Does that answer your question?
No, it doesn't. So if we make an appointment, that person is appointed until that November election?
Well, yes.
No, you said December. You gave a date. So that person terms ends, the appointed person that we appoint, their term will end in December.
Be the second Friday in December is when the term would expire.
So, and then there'll be a, a whole group of people that apply to run. And here, here's a question for you. When they apply to run, there's going to be two, there's going to be two different elections going on. One's going to be they'll apply to run for Dr. Hill, to fill Dr. Hill's seat. And then they'll run also for the regular, some people, other people may run for the, the regular. Or can they run for both at the same time?
I don't believe you can file for both seats. So there'll be the option in, and I, I think the, what do you get? Mid-July to early August is the filing period that you have to file with the registrar voters. So you pull papers and candidates, potential candidates and incumbents go to the registrar voters. They can pull papers for the full term or the short term.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
All right, Dr. Flores?
Just to clarify, it'll say short-term and long-term or full-term?
I can't speak entirely for the registrar voters, but there'll be a designation of, of, that will indicate that there's a shorter term. And that will be clear to the people who pull the papers, that they're running for.
There'll be a fourth person running and that fourth person will run for a two-year term.
That's correct.
And then three people will run for a four-year term.
Correct.
So I have two questions.
Okay.
On candidate eligibility, can you clarify what is meant by must not be prohibited for constitutional reasons? That is committed a crime, what, I mean, why? I mean, why did you put committed a crime?
Well, if a person has committed certain crimes, like felonies, they're not eligible to run for elected office.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. If a person has committed a felony, they're not eligible to run for elected office.
Okay, that's what that means? Okay, for example, have committed a crime, okay. But it says must not be prohibited.
Well, for constitutional reasons or statutory reasons. And really, that just means that they've committed a crime that would make them ineligible to run for elected office.
Okay. So if they've committed a felony or any kind of crime, they are not eligible. Okay, thank you. Oh, and my other question was for the interview questions. Can we revise a little bit?
Yes.
Dr. Flores, I think that was the next conversation.
Oh, that's the next one? Okay, sorry.
So we're going to add questions on the presentation. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Yes, I do. So then, I just wanted to clarify on page, ooh, I don't even know what that's, interview. It's candidates will, there's an area where it says draw lots to determine order of interview. What do you mean by draw lots?
Okay, that just means that it could be any method. You could draw names out of a hat. You could draw ping-pong balls with numbers on them.
Okay.
So it's just a drawing of lots.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
It's a random way of selecting that, that is used.
Kind of like you put the names in a bowl or something like that, okay. And then on regards, and I do want to clarify as well. So the person that's running to fill that vacant seat will run in November 22, will have the election 2022, November 2022. And then they'll rerun again in 2024, November 2024. So we'll have two elections that they will have to do within two years apart, kind of basically.
That's correct. And that's, that's in California law.
Yeah, okay, just wanted to clarify. Because I was kind of confused, because her term doesn't end until 2024. So that means they have to rerun again in 2024.
For an appointment, you may not serve longer than two years in a four-year term. And so this appointment process would take you up to the next election. Excuse me. And that would be the November election. So there'd be another two years remaining on the vacant term. The person could run for that two-year term.
They choose to, yeah. Okay, yeah, okay, that makes sense. Just wanted to make sure. And do you know how many applications we received so far?
I'm not receiving those. That goes to the superintendent's office.
We can't disclose that. Okay, I was just curious. Okay.
And again, tomorrow is the deadline, so whatever.
Tomorrow's the deadline. What time? That was my other question. What time is the deadline tomorrow?
It's stated on the website.
It's at 4:30 in the afternoon.
4:30, and that's physically delivered here, as I understand.
4:30, and it must be delivered here in the office?
Yes.
Is, we're not doing them electronically?
By hand.
So all of them by hand? Okay. And they have to what?
They have to be signed.
A what signature? Oh, okay. And then, okay, I think that's basically it. You just answered the questions. Thank you so much.
All righty, thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. And now we're on to, there are 12 interview question samples there. And, you know, I was kind of wondering about this, Mr. Mobley. We looked at questions right now, and we said, "Hey, we like those." We'd actually be disclosing what the questions are already, possibly. I know we're going to probably make them public, but, you know, these are sample questions. Let me say that. I think this probably came from CSBA.
It came from a variety of sources. California School Boards Association, and there are others.
Yeah, and the other way to avoid it is, Mr. Mobley was right, so they would be public. But the other way is, the board, if you wanted to offline, could say each board member send the one to two questions that they want to definitely ask. And then we narrow it down to six. We send it back out to the board. So we can get to a process to where we can narrow it down to the six questions offline. So it's up to the board. That would be a lot easier.
And then, sorry, Mr. Mobley, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was to say that, then I would probably work very closely with you to make sure that every board member know what the questions are in advance. And I would probably work behind the scenes with Mr.
And for clarity, for our board, if there was an area that we were concerned with, maybe we wanted to have a question on, we could submit that as well. Okay? Because I, there, I know there's some areas that I am interested in, and I don't see it on here, so. Dr. Flores, you had a question?
So just to clarify, we will choose two questions from this list or modify or revise one that we want, or even think of another one. And then we submit it to you?
Well, I think it would be to the superintendent's office. And then also, we would need to determine a deadline for this, when we want them turned in.
Submit it to you, Ms. Irvin, okay?
And now keep the board informed through our regular weekly updates. But it'll probably be a regular update as we get them.
That's not a bad idea. Friday update?
So, oh yeah, that's what I want to know, the deadline. And then we'll have a final review of the questions.
I think that the next question to ask is how, far in advance do we want to post them to the public?
Well, I, your next meeting is on the 8th.
Next Tuesday.
Yeah, so you would not have another meeting to discuss these questions, because we would invite the candidates to come prior to the board meeting. Would give them an orientation, hear any questions that they would have about the process. And then provide the questions, draw lots to determine the order.
I heard that, yeah. I would prefer that you also be involved in that process, Ms., Dr. Wyatt, because you're the board president. And looking at over the last, to see, like, I would prefer, I would say, this is my priority question, number one. This is my second one.
He does it with me. I don't, I don't make that decision.
Okay, so, oh, you don't? I thought it was.
The superintendent does not make the decision.
Okay.
That, I send, when that, I get that information, I send it over to the board president. We will, we will communicate by, by.
All right, I didn't hear that part. I thought it was just coming to you. So, okay, so, so I recommend that we put, this is my number one question. This is my second question. And then, to see, right, okay.
Then we'll just work out a process offline, and send it out to the board. They get back with us by email. And we can move it very quickly. And then, remember, the board has till at least the 15th, though. You can either review those questions on the 8th, or you can interview the candidates on 8th. But you still, that's why we have that, those dates in there. You have the 8th and the 15th.
No, the 8th is when we're going to interview everybody.
Right, that's the date so far.
Yeah.
And then the appointment is on the 15th.
15, yeah, right. So we have to have them before the 8th?
Yeah.
Right.
Yes.
That's correct, Dr. Flores.
And the, as I understand, the 8th is a special meeting, which is a single-topic meeting, whereas the 15th is a regular meeting. I would recommend that you do this at a special meeting. And it's.
Yeah, we're going to do that.
Yeah.
We're going to do it on the 8th as planned.
Folks, I also want to, you know, recommend to keep in mind that these are two-minute questions. So you don't want your question to be, you know, 45 seconds to ask it, and then, you know, minute 15 to answer it. So, like, I looked at somebody, I was like, "These are pretty long questions." And, you know, I want to keep that in mind. Our folks are on a 15-minute timeline. That's going to be tight. You know, that's including us reading the question and them answering the question. Dr. Rogers?
So I just want to, I didn't hear you when you narrowed it down to two questions. And so I don't, I don't see why, if it's something in align with this, if this is a guideline, if you, if a board member sends you six, you might have, you know, continuity, right? Because I, I don't know how many people are going to be creative and create a brand-new question because of that reason, making sure that it's a, it's not too long, you know, because you want to give the people their time. But I would also recommend, you know, if you're looking at this as your guideline, to send that type of ques, six of them. Because if, we may all have, can narrow it down versus saying, give two different ones. So I don't know. Is it, is it, what I'm hearing is that people want to write their own question? More so than kind of look at the guidelines and maybe wordsmith what's here?
I think that's the option we should have, is to be able to look, one at these. I think, Mr. Tillman already submitted some, I think, to Mr. Irvin.
Yeah, because I circled, I circled some myself. And I, you know, some may need some wordsmithing. But I'm saying, if you only do two, what if we all did the same two? You still need six, a total of six questions.
That won't happen, trust me.
Well, if we use this.
Well, it could happen, Mr. Tillman.
Yeah, because you've circled some right now. And I guarantee you, if we compare, we probably have some similar ones.
I guarantee you won't circle mine.
I don't know. Okay, well, anyway. We came from the same educational institution in high school, so there should be some.
Dr. Rogers, if you want to circle more, I'm all for it, you know what I mean?
Yeah, because I'm saying, I don't want, because you might end up with less. I mean, if, if a question is wordsmithed, it could be the same question, right? So you're still going to need a total of six. So that's all I'm saying.
I mean, I just know for myself, there's like two, three areas I'm thinking about that are priorities to me on this board, and in our schools and our community, our kids, that aren't on here. And, you know, I think, you know, what's that kid-centered question, right? That's what I'm looking at here. So, I mean, that's just me. So I think we should have the opportunity to be able to craft a question that is something we're passionate about, so. Yeah, no, absolutely. Mr. Irvin, you had your light on.
Oh, I'd say that if the board submits the questions that they're interested in, I'll collect them, and then we'll, we'll narrow them down and give them back to you. And then we'll reach out, reach out to these board members and narrow it down again to the six. So I'm fine with that.
And so our deadline, we need to have a hard, hard deadline right now?
Uh, tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Oh, Dennis is saying absolutely, so.
It's Groundhog Day.
And does it say each board member will get one question?
We will each have one question, Mr. Tillman. All right, so questions are already coming in, so, I mean, we're on it. Tomorrow, what time?
If they know tonight, they give it to me tonight, that's fine. I'll get them over to Ginger, or you will, as soon as you're ready. We're good.
So let's say by tomorrow to end the business, that would be 4:30. Are we in agreement? Mr. Tillman, your light's on?
No.
All righty, folks.
Mr. President, may I just?
I'm sorry, Dr. Wyatt, did you clarify as to when they will be released to us? And, and I know that you were going down the road of not having them released too soon. So, you know, when we get them, it's probably, should be at the latest.
Sounds like the Friday update?
I'll send in a Friday update. We're going to keep the Friday.
And that's going to be with some, going back and forth as well with us?
There's one more slide.
That's a good, that's a, I think, a really comfortable timeline right there. All righty.
May I just, a closing comment? Just to confirm with the board that we are looking at the potential of a large number of applicants. So we're going to keep it to 15 minutes. Candidates will give an opening statement for two minutes. And then there'll be six questions. Each board member will ask one question. And we'll keep the interview time to 15 minutes, so that we then can get through that. And then at the end of all of that, then the board will go into a deliberation process and have discussion about making an appointment. Is that correct? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you again, Dennis, for coming and staying late, and Nikki as well.
You didn't finish the last slide? And I have a couple of things, like with regards to voters have some of these days to contest the appointment?
Oh, I, thank you for bringing that up. I'm sorry. There is a 30-day period, the education.
And it's the next slide, if they can move it back, so they can.
Next slide.
Keep on going. Oop. Maybe it wasn't on that one, was it?
Well, it's on my hand now.
That one isn't displaying, I'm sorry. It shouldn't have been printed. So we're preparing that for next week, when we go through the appointment process.
Do you want to discuss it? I think we should discuss it now with Mr. Mobley here.
Yes, please.
Well, there is a process. If they, if there's a challenge, they can select or circulate a petition. That would be for 30 days. That petition would go to the county superintendent. The county superintendent would have 30 days to determine whether it's sufficient. If it is not found sufficient, then the appointment stands. If it is found sufficient, then that would actually bring it to a special election. All of this would need to be, still observe 130 days prior to the election. So let's not get too concerned about that. Let's get an appointment. I think that's in the best interest of the board to fill the vacancy and then to move forward and do good things for kids in this district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we talk about the follow-up question issue? I don't think we've covered that.
Oh.
A voice from above, sorry about that.
David, from your, your legal counsel. I'm sorry, what was the follow-up question being what?
Well, when we talked yesterday, because of the time limit of 15 minutes per speaker, and the desire to make sure that every candidate is asked the same question, we wanted to talk about having the board members agree that there would be no follow-up question. Because then you, remember that issue?
Yes, I know what you're talking about there. It's, we're going to ask the question, they're going to answer, and there's nothing else to be said.
Right, and we, we made that point earlier, that there wouldn't be clarifying questions, that you would stick to the six questions. And, and again, that's to be fair to all candidates, so that they're all asked the same question. So that, that part is important as well. And so I'm seeing heads nod, so.
But to be clear, no clarifying questions.
You'd have to ask every candidate that. And if you asked the fourth candidate, the first three would not have had a question.
Okay, so no, so just whatever they say.
No follow-up, clarifying. You've got the basic question, and we have a time limit to get through this. And again, anticipate a large number of applicants, candidates. And this is to facilitate the process for the board. Again, I'll serve as a taskmaster in this regard. But I'll, I'll do so with respect to both the board and to the candidates. All right, thank you.
I, I have a concern about the 15-minute limit. I, I think that to answer these complex questions in two minutes isn't enough. I'm not saying that we increase it to longer, I mean, like 30 minutes, but I.
My response is that because the questions are being provided in advance, so they'll see it before they walk into this room, before this body. But they will have the opportunity to reflect, maybe take some notes. And they can spend a little more time on one question if they feel that that's more important. But realizing the rules are the same for everyone, it'd be 15 minutes.
Are they going to have the timer on?
Yeah.
I believe that would be a good process to include the timer.
Would it be 15-minute timer? They stop speaking, they'll know in advance, they have 15 minutes.
Or would it be two minutes per, per question, no?
Well, it'd just be 15 minutes, and they'll have to watch their time.
Two minutes per question is a guideline. But if a candidate looks at the questions and wants to spend more time on one question and skip over the others, that's really up to that individual. They need to manage their own time. They're given the questions in advance. And I think this, again, the process would be the same for everyone.
I just, appealing to my board members, I would add an additional five minutes. This is very important, a decision that we have to make. And to be, to be constrained by time, because we don't even know how many people are going to apply.
There's more than a few right now.
Oh.
So I would say 15 minutes would make sense in my opinion. But the board should decide what they want to do.
But they haven't gone through the eligibility criteria, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Mr. Tillman, he has his light on.
I, I'm just voicing my concern, that's all. I don't know if anybody agrees with me.
I think the 15 minutes is great. They have part of the time for opening statement and a closing statement.
We didn't include in closing statement, but if the board, you know, wants to manage that within the 15 minutes.
I'm just saying, you know, they have 15 minutes, so they can manage how they want to. And I, I would suggest that we add a part for a closing statement in case they want to just rush through everything and have some big bang at the end, why they should get the.
Danny, is the opening statement part of the 15 minutes?
Yes, all of it is. And I think this, I think this is great, because I'd rather get a new board member who doesn't pontificate and talk for a long time. Yes, all of it is. And I think this, I think this is great, because I'd rather get a new board member who doesn't pontificate and talk for a long time. So I, this is perfect practice. This is a good way to screen them. Fifteen minutes is perfect. Thank you.
Boy, I, I hope we take heed to that ourselves, but thank you, Mr. Tillman. Mr. Mobley, I wanna get you out of here before, you know, before you get asked another question, because I, I really, I really enjoyed Mr. Tillman's last comment. Thank you. Thank you again, both of you. All righty, uh, eight point oh, eight point one, board member comments. I think we are starting with Ms. Rosales Medina and then going right and then back over to, over here.
I just wanna say, um, Super Bowl is coming up soon. I had my forty Niners all supporting, but I'm glad that we have one of our California teams, um, the Rams going through. So that's basically it.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina, Dr. Daddy Rogers.
I don't know what. Um, so, um, I, there is some good news, um, that I do wanna share in the district in support of, of our former, uh, board member that is no longer with us, that Congressman Pete Aguilar's office is working on naming a post office after her. And so we have submitted, um, formalized, um, documentation to, to them. And so it is really, really cool and they're really, really moving forward with it. And thanks, Ginger, they wanted a statement from the district. And so, um, it's, that's just amazing. You know, what can I say? That's amazing. And I know some of you may have received, um, the documentation I had a chance to send out. They're also honoring, um, Dr. Hill through the Headdress Ball, and I have the pleasure of, uh, being her, uh, the model. She had done this before. Um, and so they're going to continue to move forward and support that, because she was a big supporter of that. And then for you all, some of you, I've said, if, if you happen to see me on a video with a pink wig on, I haven't completely lost my mind. And it's not date night, but, um, I'll also be representing her memory, um, with the Susan G. Coleman. It's called the Big Wig, um, Big Wig, um, campaign. And that's also simultaneously going on and they're doing that in honor of her memory, because she was a big advocate for Susan G. Coleman. So definitely want to let you guys know that. And then I also, um, to the district and superintendent, I believe I saw the, the, some of the numbers on the four-year plan. And I know that was a big, that was a big, um, lift, but it's good to know that in the midst of this, we have connected with, you know, right at a hundred percent in many cases, but for the students to also still have had that engagement to say, what's gonna happen? Where am I going? And I'm sure even in those conversations, there's about how to do it. And there were some conversations where, um, individuals reached out to our district and Dr. Escavell speaking with them about more options for our students when, when they leave. And so that is still important to our students, because like we talk about socially emotional, and those are out there. We don't wanna leave them with just being overwhelmed. Um, and, and Molly did a great job, you know, just really bringing it home to us to let us know from the lenses, I think middle school is what she was speaking from. So imagine it's even our high school students are, are, it's even more scarier, right? It's still a feeling of where, where do I go from here? And so I wanted to apply the district on that, because I think that was huge, that the four-year plans was something that we worked on before with the Hope Makers in trying to get out there and do that. And then to come back and revisit that, it's just so important, especially right now. And then, um, Dr. Rodriguez, I will give you the information from Kelly Gilroy. She's from, um, through the Department of Rehabilitation and, um, she's also a parent in the district, but very supportive of our special education, um, program. And she wants to definitely talk to you about connecting our special education to the Department of Rehabilitation. They got some amazing programs that I happened to hear in a presentation, so I'll get that to you. So those are my comments. Thank you so much. And to everyone, um, happy Black History Month.
Thank you, Dr. Daddy Rogers. Ms. Savios?
Oh, I won't take too long. Um, just, uh, had something that had come up a couple weeks back. And I kept forgetting to bring it up, so I wanted to mention it. Um, last board meeting, I think it was, we spoke about, um, no, one of the board meetings, we spoke about parents came and the method of communication, you know, that not everybody had access to, you know, technology and so forth. I had, I had been contacted by, by several, um, uh, different parents in regards to meetings. So I know that we're still having, um, meetings via Zoom, um, specifically for the special education, um, students. And so, uh, some, some parents are sent the link with the expect, and given a date with the expectation that they know how to log in. And they don't. And so we wanna make sure that if we are having meetings virtually for parents, um, any parent, but, but, uh, parents, you know, in special ed, because usually those are more frequent, that we're making sure that they know how to have, you know, how to get on and, and access, um, the meeting. Just, uh, something to, to, to keep in mind. And if we do provide trainings for them, that the trainings are not via Zoom, because then it defeats the purpose. Okay, anyway, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Savios. Mr. Tillman? No comment from Mr. Tillman. Dr. Flores?
Just three, uh, four things. I also wanna, uh, say that, you know, that we should, uh, honor, uh, Black History Month. I was gonna read a couple of children's books, but I'll save them, because it's late. I'll do it next time. And, um, number two, Happy Lunar Year. It's the year of the tiger. And it symbolizes today, actually, is, uh, Chinese New Year, uh, also Vietnamese and Koreans celebrate it, I believe. And it, the tiger, the year of the tiger symbolizes courage and bravery. And, um, so should honor our resilience and our strength to endure all the things that we're going through, uh, with this COVID. Thirdly, I just wanted, I know you've gotten, uh, notices, but CAPE has pivoted to online because of the Omnicom surge and the surges coming. And also San Francisco City has, um, put in even more stricter, uh, uh, guidelines for in-person, um, um, conferences. And so, uh, they decided to, the board decided to pivot to online. And that will allow, I think, a lot more people to participate. And the scheduling will be really great, because it'll be, uh, in the afternoon, after everybody gets out of work and early, uh, evening, like three thirty to seven, and then on Saturday from eight thirty to one. So people will be able to participate. And lastly, um, Mr. Irvin and Dr. Funches, I just would like to know the status of, uh, the COVID leave, uh, MOUs, for, uh, our, our unions and where we're at with those. And, um, Mr. President, uh, when will we agendize them so that we can approve them or vote on them?
I can weigh in on that right now.
Gotcha.
I was just writing down what, um, Dr. Flores was asking for. Thank you, Dr. Flores. All done? Oh, Dr. Funches. I'm sorry. Did you have a response?
Did. We were, we've been at the table with, uh, CACA and SBTA, and we're close to those agreements. They're reviewing them, looking them over. They should make the February fifteenth board. Both should.
All righty. Well, that leaves me, I think. And, uh, Dr. Flores, thank you for bringing up the Lunar New Year. I know we discussed that a little bit earlier. I think it was yesterday, earlier in the week. And, uh, definitely an amazing celebration for, you know, Asian-Americans, and I'm glad you brought it up. It's probably something we might even need to look at down the road as a resolution. But, uh, you know, specifically, I know, um, it's our Chinese, Vietnamese, and Korean communities that celebrate, uh, the Lunar New Year. So thank you again for bringing that up. Uh, just last, I think it was last night, okay, losing track of days. Our Samuel County, uh, School Board Association had its annual meeting. And, um, it was nice. I know, uh, Dr. Rogers was there with me as well, and we're, they did a, a wonderful tribute again to Dr. Hill and a very, very touching tribute. So I just want to say thank you to them. Mr. Mobley was there, um, emceeing that as well, so he's had a busy week, but it was a nice, uh, nice meeting, so. Also, uh, got to briefly attend the superintendent parent advisory, it's either committee or council, I'm not sure which, is it committee, committee? Very, very well attended. Um, we had, I believe, a member from almost every school, if not every school, and then maybe multiple parents from our schools and, uh, getting some solid feedback from our parents. You know, the comments that I heard and were able to see in the chat room, uh, I think that's very, very important, because we need that partnership with our parents. I always say, we, we as a district can't do it on our own. We have to do it with our families and our parents to make sure that our students succeed. So great turnout to that, uh, Mr. Irvin. Good job on that and your team. And I think that's it for me. Keep it kinda short and sweet. All right. Eight point two, superintendent staff.
Um, I'll, I'll, um, focus more on teaching and learning on this one, but we're still moving forward with our units of study in terms of aligning our, our, our curriculum across the board. Uh, we've talked about bringing alignment across the entire district, so that's moving forward. We have already selected our teacher leadership team members. I believe, Anna, we're pretty much close, right? I think we, because we're looking at eight to twelve members per grade level. Um, and they'll be creating, you know, moving forward, creating twelve-week units of study, looking at, uh, ten weeks plus two weeks to reteach and then pre-impulse and so on, and end of unit assessment. So we're moving forward and really wanna thank those teachers out there who stepped up to the plate and, uh, wanted to be a part of it, and so that was good. And then our teacher advisory committee, which will be those who are gonna be reviewing it and playing a major role in that. And I believe we got one rep per site as well. I think we're close. Dr. Escavell, Anna, are we close with that? We're pretty close?
Yes, we actually have an orientation meeting on Tuesday for both of those committees.
So we have both, we have, we have the members that stepped up and signed up. Good. So we're moving forward with that as planned. Um, and then on the four-year plans, uh, you saw the data. The goal was to get to a hundred percent. Um, and we're still working on that, because we had to come in starting August, as it was a tough, I thought we would get maybe at fifty percent by the end of the year, but if you saw the numbers, we're there. I do think by next year, I believe, Dr. Escavell, when we start, every student will be on a four-year plan, digital ties, we'll be able to track it. And the good news here is this, when a student fails a course next year, if we do this right, we'll be able to have early warning signs. And this way, we can track those students so they can stay on A through B, G pathway, no matter what. That's gonna be some challenges, but I know, once we get to director of college and career readiness, they'll be working closely with our counselors. So we'll be pushing that. There's a couple of, uh, some gaps still there that a couple of schools have gotta work with very closely. But we know who they are. But again, because of that, we're in this pandemic, we're trying to give a little grace. But we do know at some point, uh, we're gonna have to still, we have to push very hard, because there's no way we, there's no reason why we can't get to a hundred percent of our kids on the digital ties, four-year plans. And it will allow us, when a student fails a class, to be notified, so we can get the student support they need. And then the same thing is, as we're moving forward with the units of studies, we're looking at learning labs across the entire district at all of our K schools. But right now, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Anna, we're gonna pilot eight of them this year. And again, that, the purpose of those will be, um, and, and I've heard feedback from teachers, so I'm, as I'm on the ground, I've been in almost six hundred classrooms or so. The feedback is, we need them, we need that support, but we just have to make sure we do it right and give the school two, two, give each school two to three options on what that looks like. I know Mrs. Applegate, um, decided we wanted two to three options versus the one option, right? I believe.
Yes, that's correct, because it depends on their facilities, their staff, and so we wanna be flexible.
And that will allow us, as a, as a district, to support those students who are struggling with specific standards and concepts and skills and literacy and math, get the support they need for that thirty to forty-five minutes and still be able to participate in class and small group instruction. And hopefully, um, it should happen during a universal access time, so they don't have to lose any of their co-instructional time. So we're gonna come back with a, a comprehensive plan, but remember, we have to attack the data and we gotta attack it. And we, and I think that the good news is that the, the instruction out there is all, overall, very good in the classroom. The one thing I can say, the teaching is good in the classroom. So we, we, we know what the disconnect is, is just there are no alignment of essential standards across the board, even though some schools have their own essential standards, other schools don't. If we can align that across the board, we think that we're gonna see a huge jump, because I still believe that as a large urban district, we can be the best of the best. But again, it comes down to can we align this, can we do some alignment here? But again, the instruction in the classroom is pretty good and, uh, we're happy with it. The talking to teachers, and there was an email, I think I sent you guys today, that's an example of a teacher saying, hey, here's an issue that we're having out there. And that's just one example. But we get them all the time. And I was at a school today where I'm gonna meet with another grade level team and sit down, and they're gonna walk me through how they do their lesson planning. And I'm gonna go to another school. I'm gonna sit with the next grade level to see how they're doing their lesson planning and get some ideas of what are the gaps there, what are we missing here? So this way, I don't have to rely on just making assumptions. I gotta be on the ground and hear from them. So that was exciting, um, on that. And then, um, Dr. Escavell, anything I'm missing on the four-year plans real quickly, so I can finish up my other three points on the four-year plan?
The only thing to add is that, uh, we are really excited to move to a digitized platform. Uh, our current state is that all high schools currently are using a paper copy, and it looks differently depending on what high school you're, you're at. And so this process, a team has been working across departments and divisions, so that there is a uniform, digital, four-year plan that tracks both A through G as well as college and career indicator readiness. Uh, and again, on the equity side ride, it will provide access to all kids. So that's the training that's gonna kick off this spring and summer to launch in the, launch in the fall.
All the training, remember, even on the teaching and learning side, the teacher leadership team, the teacher advisory council, that's all gonna be training, the learning labs, those are all gonna be training, so we can make sure we do it right. Remember, this year is a prep and planning year. If we do it just right, we'll be at a good place next year. Uh, and so we're excited about that. Um, and, um, and so, and the last couple of things I had here was, I wanted to acknowledge, uh, Dr. Benares, she was appointed, uh, president-elect for CALSA. Uh, congratulations. Uh, that came through. And she's gonna make sure the conferences next year is our, you know, uh, back, you know, aligned with AXA, uh, right? Uh, that's hopefully. Uh, and then also, um, the superintendent, I wanna thank the San Bernardino Superintendent of Schools for recognizing our two Golden Bell Awards last night. I know some of you attended that. And then our superintendent parent advisory committee, again, one of the goals, when I came in here, told the board, we're gonna restructure how we do our parent advisory group. And the good news was, we were able to get all of our parent advisory reps online last night. We had over ninety-four total people on the line. They only needed one rep per site. They also have an alternate. Beatrice and her team did an outstanding job of organizing it. The parents, um, felt special. And these are parents who are actively involved at every school, but are not a part of an advisory committee. So I wanna be clear there. These are parents who are actively involved at every school. They love the idea of the parent advocates, so we're moving forward with that soon. We're gonna have a parent advocate every site. That will be an advocate for parents and help them navigate the system. And then we're gonna, and then we have that parent advisory rep as well, superintendent parent advisory rep at every site. So now they'll have two voices out there that will help us get the message out there, um, and, and help us make sure there's clarity. So overall, and I know people get tired of me talking about teaching and learning, and I, I apologize for that. But I do think that we gotta continue as a district to focus on teaching and learning, because I truly believe that as we get on the other side of this pandemic and we put these systems and structures in place, ladies and gentlemen, next year, our students will be well-prepared and our teachers will be well-prepared to really tackle, uh, the, the structure, the, the deficits that we had in learning this year because of the pandemic. But I will tell you this, though, in every classroom that I've been in, the kids are on task, they're focused. The teachers are, are, are delivering quality instruction. So across the board, ladies and gentlemen, the, 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 the instruction out there is solid, taking into consideration of what we've been through over the last couple of years. So I truly still believe that we're gonna get there. Um, and so, uh, we'll continue to get feedback from our team and our staff and, uh, we'll continue to be on the ground and, and always, again, invite anyone who wants to visit with me to, anybody wanna go with me to visit classroom. What we're also gonna be doing really quickly in the superintendent parent advisory committee, starting next week, when I do go to classrooms, because I visit four a day, schools a day, they're now gonna invite the, the superintendent parent advisory committee member, so that parent can go and see what we're doing. And then that's another way for us to build parent capacity in their, in their voice and allow them to see what's happening in the classroom. So they're not just a member of a committee, they can actually go and join. And secondly, as we get those parent advocates, there'll be another opportunity for parents to know at that school site, they can call that individual instead of calling a board member or myself or someone else. They can call it advocate, advocate. They should be helping them navigate through the system and, uh, and through the parent center. So that's the goal right now. I think we're close. Sandra, I think we're close with that, right? Are we close?
Yes, we are. We're actually working on their badges, um, so that, that way they're official in their official capacity. So, um, the meeting went exceptionally well. We got great feedback and, um, looking forward to great things.
Yeah. So, so that's where we are with that. And, uh, yeah. So, yeah, so on the teaching and learning side, I think we're feeling good about it. But again, it's been a long road. There's a lot of battles out there, but I think in the end, it's gonna be what's good for kids. And I, I, I always wanna make sure I end with that, that we have to continue to focus on making decisions in the best interest of kids and providing our staff and students and our parents with the support they need to be successful. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Irvin. All right, we'll move on to nine point one, approval personnel report number thirteen dated February first, twenty twenty-two, which contains actions such as hiring, retirements, resignations, promotions, and terminations. As presented. All right, it's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Yeah, you do. It is.
All righty, motion carries. We'll move on to nine point two, uh, which is memorandum of understanding between Samuel County Unified School District and Samuel County Teachers Association, short-term independent study. I'm gonna close the current session and then open the public hearing. All right, on January sixth, twenty twenty-two. hearing. All right, on January 6th, 2022, the district and SBTA met to negotiate the effects and implementation of the Short-Term Independent Study for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year. All districts are required to offer independent study as an educational option unless they receive a hardship waiver contract to provide independent study through the County Office of Ed or enter into an inter-district transfer agreement for the relevant students with another LEA. And the law requires districts to offer independent study as an alternative to in-person instruction for 2021, 2022, being resolved that the Board of Education adopts a Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, between Samuel County Unified School District and Samuel Teachers Association Short-Term Independent Study.
All moved.
All right, it was moved by Dr. Flores and seconded by Ms. Sabios. Any discussion? All right, there's no discussion. Let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing, reopen the regular meeting. All right, we're on 10.0, Consent Items. All moved.
Second.
All right, it was moved by Mr. Tillman, seconded by Ms. Rosales Medina. Any items to be removed or pulled? All right, that's really good news, boy. Thank you. All right, keep it rolling. You're right, Dr. Rogers. All righty. Boy, this is new, kind of hard to think about when we don't have anything pulled. All right, well, for the consent items, do we have a motion to accept?
We did already.
Oh, we did. I'm sorry, who did that?
Voting now.
Wow, you guys are fast, man. I got me on that one. Well, let's vote. Again, for me. I have to thank my colleagues for trying to get us out of here before tomorrow. All right, motion carries. We're on to 11.1, Review of Board Requests. Staff will review items, updates, and requests in. 11.1.
Good evening, Board. I will admit that I've been a little sleepy tonight, so hopefully I didn't miss any of your questions. But let me start with Mr. Danny Tillman, who asked that we would consider providing funding to assist the Personnel Commission with recruitment. Ms. Myra Sabios asked that we would look into water quality in the school drinking fountains. Mr. Danny Tillman asked, and there were several of these throughout the next section, so, but asked that we would make clear and easy to understand what we will, that we will get parental consent in advance of testing. Dr. Flores and Ms. Sabios asked if we would make clear when students have to go home based on the new testing model, and for how long that might be. Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina and Dr. Wyatt asked that we would look into alternative methods of testing to accommodate those who cannot self-swab, something such as a saliva test. Dr. Gwen Rogers asked that we might, if we might be able to find some alternative to sending students home if they don't test. Goodness, where was I? Mr. Danny Tillman asked that we would consider allowing students to stay in school while testing at home or elsewhere, only send them home if they have a negative test that isn't a ten, that isn't obtained by day five. Dr. Barbara Flores asked that we would use multiple means of communicating with families, and also asked if we had enough tests on hand. Ms. Myra Sabios asked how we will communicate the impact of additional letters that are going home based on group testing, and how that might connect with the perception of cases that are posted to the dashboard. Dr. Gwen Rogers asked how we would get information to the board quickly when there are changes to guidance that impact our operations. Dr. Barbara Flores asked that, how we were, asked us to confirm that we were following HIPAA laws when we're testing and reporting test results. Mr. Danny Tillman asked that we would provide information about the estimated, what did I do? Estimate, well, this was out of the PowerPoint on the budget. He asked that we would provide information about the additional education investments and how much we estimated would be coming from those. Mr. Danny Tillman then asked how we, how we could use ESER funds to support salaries based on some new guidance from the Secretary of Education. Dr. Gwen Rogers asked if we would consider using Hope Makers to intervene like we did before with them as mentors, and also encourage that we connect with the Department of Rehabilitation. And then, Ms. Myra Sabios asked that we would provide additional support to parents who want to participate in online meetings but might need more guidance or training to log in.
Can I just clarify? I like your process. I likened it to the Hope Makers process, but we've far succumbed, what, based on what you guys are doing to get these four-year plans. So, I don't know if you need additional, but I just was saying, I know we started it, but you guys are doing good. And then, just a little bit more clarity into specifically the, the changes that take place with the CDC, and those are the things we need clarity on. As, what point does this board weigh, want to weigh in or need to weigh in? And so, Mr. President, I don't, I know that's be something you'll be discussing with the superintendent, just so we don't run into this problem that we just ran into. So, that was, that was my specific question, is those changes, because they come immediately, so.
And I also wanted to add with regards to special, with special ed for students that are for, it's also utilizing nurses or, or some paid staff to help administer those tests in case the parents get permission and so forth. So, it's not just necessarily looking at additional, different types of tests, but it's also looking for people that can administer it.
Got it. Thank you so much.
All righty.
I have an additional one. I, I had asked about this, if we were going to agendize the MOU, COVID Leave MOU for February 15th from our unions.
I actually did capture that, but I thought that Dr. Funches answered that, because he did say that we would be bringing it by the 15th, I think.
But I want you to record that.
Okay, I did. I just, I, I got it. Okay. Thank you so much. I'll make sure that it's there. Thank you.
I believe there's one more item, and Ms. Rosales Medina, correct me if I'm wrong, you've been asking for a report from HR. Was that in a Friday update? Or did you ever receive that?
I don't, was it in the, Dr. Funches?
I don't remember seeing it, but.
I did get clarity from Mrs. Medina on that, and we're working on that extensive report that'll capture all of the district staff ethnicity. It just takes a little bit of time to make sure it's accurate.
Right, thank you, and thank you, Dr. Wyatt.
Thank you, Ms. Octaver, again. We had a motion to move to adjourned by Mr. Tillman, seconded by Ms. Sabios. Thank you, Board, and Executive Cabinet, and guests tonight. We finished an hour and 40 minutes sooner than last meeting, so we're trending in the right direction. If we could do that on the next meeting, I'd be very impressed.